All right, call to order, the July twenty-sixth.
July, where have you been?
November. November.
Have you been outside?
November twenty, I don't know why I did that. Happy Thanksgiving. November twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Start A and R six ninety-five and seven oh one Salem Street, seven oh one Salem Street LLC. Applicant requests dissolve lot line to create a single lot. Any introduction needed?
I will give you a quick reminder as to what this project was. So back on September third, Planning Board approved a special permit for the expansion of the store restaurant on seven oh one, at seven oh one Salem Street. One of the conditions for, listed in the decision, was to file in A and R with the Planning Board. And so they have done that, and I will cast that as soon as my computer lets me, so you can see. So this is the A and R plan that was submitted. There's no wetlands on it, so subdivision had no concerns, building reviewed their requirements. So again, they just looked to dissolve this lot line and combine everything, so it becomes one single lot.
Meet with zoning?
Yes.
Okay, so where it's making one lot, not creating multiple lots, it does not require subdivision, so unless there are questions, I think we can prove this as not requiring subdivision. Motion to approve to, uh,
Direct the planner.
Direct the planner to endorse the, uh, A and R.
Sub moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proved. All right. Discussion, uh, let's do a Seth, well, do a Planning Board twenty twenty calendar, do that first, that's easy.
February week is at school vacation week.
I think that was listed. I don't know if that matters. I won't be here. Right. Anybody else we, uh,
Yeah, I think that's February vacation week.
All right, so I'll check into that, but the other weeks look.
All right, so. January seventh, January twenty-fourth, first.
It is.
Yes, February seventeenth is President's Day, February eighteenth, that is vacation week. Um.
April twenty-first is April vacation week too.
All right. So we have a couple of options then, we could, um, move it to the following week.
Uh, so by, so let's, February eighteenth, why don't we do that, February twenty-fifth? That still gives us two weeks in between that and the next meeting, so I think that works, that's easy enough.
Yes.
February twenty-fifth. Um. April.
All right, so.
We can do April twenty-eighth.
Okay. Now that gives you one week between the twenty-eighth and the fifth.
Yeah.
So do you?
Oftentimes, if you're looking at warrant articles and making recommendations on that, so if it could go, um, to the fourteenth, it would probably be helpful.
Okay, so April twenty-first, move to April fourteenth. Um, that's fine with me. Easter is the Sunday before, because anyone, Good Friday, that should be okay for everyone, okay? Day before tax day, so get your taxes done early. Um, okay, um. Are we actually gonna have a national night out, so is there a reason to?
That stresses me out.
I'm not so sure, especially with, uh, who knows what's gonna be constructed or not constructed. Um. Okay, we put that off for now, what do we have for September twelve? Or X, uh. Okay, the rest are fine. Okay, so that, that's, have, we don't need a motion or anything like that, right, that's, that would be our agenda, or those are all meeting dates? All right? Great.
So I'll update that, and then we'll put it on the website.
Okay. Uh, all right, so next, let's do accessory dwelling unit bylaw.
Oh, you want to cast, let me stop.
Turn that over to Jean to start. We'll have a little, um, PowerPoint and then a discussion.
All right, so, um, as you know, this has been on the agenda a couple of times now. So I put together just a short PowerPoint, really have a high level discussion on accessory dwelling units in general. Certainly not the detail that is in the bylaw, and then we'll go from there in terms of what type of discussion you'd like to have. So, as you know, um, accessory dwelling units, or an ADU, as they're referred to, is an independent residential living area on the same property as a larger primary dwelling. So that's really important, there's a larger primary, and there's a, um, second dwelling unit on the same lot, independent of the primary. ADUs go by many names, in-law suites, we have what we call a family suite in our bylaw. Second unit, granny flat, basement apartment, garage apartment. An ADU generally takes the full, three different forms. It can be repurposed space, example, above a garage or in a basement. A standalone unit, um, separate from the primary house, and that's often in a detached structure that exists on the lot already. Again, that's usually a detached garage. And it can be attached to the primary home. Accessory is a key word. It's a secondary to the primary, in the same way that a garage would be secondary importance. So we have accessory dwelling, accessory structures in our bylaw today, it's accessory to the primary use. It cannot be sold separately, it's clearly subordinate to the primary dwelling. Are limited in size, and the exterior is required to blend in with the surrounding neighborhood. ADUs are flexible little homes that can help meet a variety of living arrangements of our, our lives may demand. They can house family, friends, or be income generating rental units. And again, that's the primary difference between our family suite bylaw today. It's really limited to specific relatives that can occupy that home, and, and it's associated with that particular person. And so when that person leaves that family suite, the in-law is supposed to be dismantled. So, in your packet for tonight, I think it's the last five years' worth of ADUs, uh, family suites that were approved through the zoning board special permit process. On average, there's about three a year that get permitted through special permits with the ZBA. And so what I've included is, I just took, you know, random ones to try to get a family suite that has been constructed in each of the zoning districts. So, on the top left, um, that's a residential two district, the lot size is forty-six thousand square feet. Our four, this lot size happens to be thirteen thousand six hundred square feet, the required is twelve-five in our four.
Jean, do you know, is the accessory portion, is that the, is it attached, or is that the little shed?
No, it's not the, it's not the shed, it's the attached.
Okay.
Now, in this particular unit, there's actually a set of stairs on the far right-hand side of this house, to the rear. And so I first took that picture, but as I proceeded down the road, th- this is what I believe to be the accessory portion, right off the driveway. So the next one is again a lot four, I'm, I'm sorry, a residential four, lot of twenty thousand nine hundred square feet. Again, a lawn ranch, you actually don't see the accessory dwelling unit, it's behind this garage, so you don't see it at all from the street.
These examples, um, do you know the size of the family suite that was constructed?
I don't, I didn't pull the permit for it, but those are limited to a maximum of twelve hundred square feet, or, if I remember right, twenty-five percent of the primary's gross floor area. So there, there is a restriction on the size. The next one is an R-three lot, again, this is actually a very large lot, sixty-five thousand three hundred forty square feet, I think a significant amount of that is wetlands. So this is actually built right up on the street. The R-one lot, um, again, R-one requires two acres, this one is almost seventy-seven thousand square feet. This, I believe, because there's some construction trucks out front that are not in the picture, um, but this is just an example of, this was permitted in September by the ZBA. It's not constructed yet, so I don't know exactly where this accessory unit is gonna be, um, but that house was approved. The R-four lot next to that, again, thirteen thousand six hundred square feet, you can see the accessory unit is behind this white rail fence there. Again, right off the driveway, in addition, added to the primary resident. The R-three lot is thirty-seven, almost thirty-eight thousand square feet, it's a Victorian. I can't tell from the street where the accessory unit is there, but it was permitted through ZBA. So who benefits from ADUs? ADUs just typically rent at a lesser rate than market rate residential units in these multifamilies. So entry-level teachers, firefighters, police officers, to name a few, who can live and work in the community, it's just, it provides an affordable option. Young families with kids can have a live-in nanny, a grandparent to help raise the children. Seniors and empty nesters, um, on fixed income, again, it's a way to either generate some rental income or stay in the ADU and rent out the primary residence. And North Andover businesses, um, can provide housing options for employees of local businesses. How do they affect the housing market? So ADUs create an environment where the private sector can produce affordable housing. Again, we talk about big A and small A, you know, this is the small A affordable housing, without having to invest public dollars. Affordable housing through ADUs is created in two ways. ADUs rent below the typical apartments rent for, and the unit could generate rental income to help homeowner, homeowners cover mortgage payments, or simply make ends meet. And, um, as we discussed before, the housing plan, the master plan, both included, um, a recommendation for these, they did in the past plans as well, but they were there in two thousand in the last master plan, they certainly, I don't know, over time they got to town meeting, John, I don't know if you have any more history in that. This is the first draft bylaw that I've seen for, for the ADU, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll defer my comments, I think, because it consists of what I said before.
Okay. So I just, um, just initial thoughts, I think would be helpful, and.
So I think what I'd like to discuss with these right now is what people's, so the idea behind this, well, the, the question is, do we want to try to come up with a bylaw to present for town meeting? That's the, the question, is for why we're talking about this. And so the big question is, is this something in general, accessory dwelling units, that the board would support? That's question one, so I think we should talk about that question. And once we talk about that question, subsequent, depending on the results of that, a subsequent meeting should be what, um, form that would take if the answer is yes. So, I guess I'd open it up to discussion on thoughts on a planning board-sponsored accessory dwelling unit bylaw in general. Not necessarily the bylaw that we have as a draft. John, Aaron?
Uh, I guess I would start with talking again about the history of the efforts that we've had in this area related to, particularly to the R-four district, uh, where, uh, there were a number of changes in the bylaw related to two-family housing, and frankly, uh, it created a huge problem for a long time for a lot of people in a lot of neighborhoods where they felt that the creation of a lot of these, uh, twins, uh, significantly changed the character of the streets. And, the bylaw was significantly scaled back and tightened up, uh, for that very reason. I, I really have a fear that this i- is going to create the same set of problems, and there's going to be a hornet's nest of opposition to anything that we do in this space. I really do. And I, it, and I think it's a solution in search of a problem, frankly, because I think it's, I think the arguments against it are legitimate, that it changes the character of neighborhoods. And I don't think, given all the things that are happening in town right now, this is the right path we want to go down. That's just my opinion.
So what, what exactly is the opposition in terms, so it, it's the, the looks of?
It changes the, uh, the character of streetscape, because you all have single-family houses of the same size and shape. One family living in, but here you introduce a situation where, in any given lot, you're going to have two sets of people living in, in the same physical space that one, there's going to be more massing, there's going to be more parking. It's not gonna be family members, it can be anybody, and it can be freestanding, uh, things. And I think a lot of people are gonna have a problem with that, because it will, I think it will potentially change the character of a lot of, particularly in town neighborhoods.
And so, okay, but with, and what we have now with the family suites allows for a good amount of what's in this, not maybe to the same extent.
Not to the same extent, and it's a family, I mean, I think there's a lot of differences between family suites, because family suites, first of all, just about always are gonna have the same entrance, there's gonna be commonality, it's the same family. It's not the same thing, it's a different sort of thing, because it's one family unit, and here you have two independent set of people with, you know, different entrances, they don't even know each other, in many cases, it, it just is different. I mean, again, I understand why, uh, we've considered doing it, I just think at this time in this town, it, this doesn't make sense.
Aaron?
Um, I am open to exploring it. I, I feel it gives a, a property owner some leeway to stay in their home if they want to, um, and, and have some control over their property. But, but I, I do agree with John in the sense that if, if we're gonna do this, we should be very clear on the problem. And this being a means to resolve that problem. If we're just doing it because we think it's a good thing to do to ex- expand the housing stock, and that, that's great and all, but we, I, I, the, the citizens of this town, they're gonna ask, why are we doing this? And so we've gotta be very definitive about what the problem is.
Okay, so, I think the problem is a lack of housing choices. So I think that is, to me, that's the overarching issue, and I know that's not really something that really affects most people, especially the most people that come to town meeting, because they are, they have housing and they live here. But I think that, that as we've seen with a lot of apartments coming in and development, is that there is this need for housing. And the housing plan talks about it really clearly, that housing choices and options are a real, um, concern. And I, to me, doing anything we can, even limited, i- is a, is a plus. So I don't think that, say we pass this accessory dwelling unit, I don't think that it would create this large-scale use of these, because it requires investment, right? If you're gonna build something like this, generally, you're gonna require some investment. It requires a special permit from the zoning board, it re, it's limited in size and scope, and can be very limited in how it's, um, established in terms of where it is, and the, where the entrances are, and stuff like that. But to me, the idea that it has to be a family member is antiquated, I think, and also all practically unenforceable. So that, maybe, yeah, your mom moves in and lives there for a year, then they move out, and then what do you do, you're supposed to rip out the kitchen and stuff like that? I don't think it happens, I don't, I don't think we have any mechanism to enforce it, and I think that these aren't used that way. So, I'm really for any way we can do it, because I think any way we can increase housing options for people, whether it's to keep them in their home, to allow a family member, or a nanny, or someone to come in, to allow for a rental, not short-term, I wouldn't want any, I, I wouldn't want to be not allowed to have any short-term rentals, because I don't think the purpose is commercial Airbnb, but if it, um, if it's still, like, all those pictures, I, I didn't see any that I was like, oh, no, you know, that, that doesn't meet, it looks like they're all pretty well masked.
Yeah, but that's not what these are going to be like, because these are family suites, and they're not gonna have separate entrances. You're going to have a different flavor of house when you have it for an independent party. Yes, because look, you're not allowed to have a separate structure today. Under this bylaw, you would be able to have a separate structure.
Not necessarily, it depends on how we craft it.
Well, okay.
So not necessarily, you, you could craft it, that you don't, you couldn't, some allow for, like, in a shed design, some could say that it has to be attached, and then it has to have an entrance off the back. I mean, you could craft it, so.
But I mean, if, if, if our sole, uh, objective is to make housing more affordable, then why don't we go across in every residential district and minimize the lot size? Why don't we allow two-family houses in every single district? Well, the point, the reason why you don't do it, obviously, and it's an extreme example, is because at some point it changes the character of every neighborhood. And I'm suggesting something like this will have a broader impact than you think on the character of neighborhoods, especially small in-town streets with houses like, on lots of ten to fifteen thousand or less.
You okay?
I'm in agreement with John, I think it would change the character of the neighborhood. I'm, I'm not opposed to people having parents or family members who need that accommodation. Um, and I think there are ways to make it enforceable, I was on the zoning board in Andover, and I sat for those permits. And I don't know that it was foolproof, but they had to be renewed every X number of years, and the permit was tied to a specific occupant. And yes, the kitchen was supposed to be removed when the use for it ended, um, so I don't know how they actually enforce that, but I don't know if our current family dwelling bylaw has any term expiration or names of specific occupant, from what I saw, it doesn't.
It doesn't have any teeth, really.
Right, so, I mean, maybe that's the way to solve the enforceability problem, is to alter how we handle that, but I don't think I'd be comfortable having half of my neighbors all of a sudden have rental units within their houses, it does change the character of the neighborhood.
I agree.
I agree in terms of, with the, the later comments, in terms of changing the character of the neighborhood, I'd be interested to see what learning from, um, John, how you mentioned before with, with two-family homes, how there, there was issues there, if there's something that we could learn from that, and maybe add more restrictions to this in term, maybe the number within a district, or the type of district, um, that we would allow something like this to increase, but would certainly, it would, my concern would be around the character of the neighborhood.
I, I, I struggle with the character of the neighborhood, because neighborhoods change, and times change, and I don't think I don't think we can get stuck in that the neighborhoods that we have in town are gonna be the same forever, because the town's growing, everywhere's growing, so things will change, and the more we keep certain neighborhoods the same, the more it affects other ones where we now have larger multifamily housing and things like that, so. It's, um, I don't know, I don't, I guess I, I don't take as much stock in that. Okay, um, well, it doesn't seem like we have, I wouldn't say even a broad consensus on it, so why don't we hold off for now? And then we'll potentially revisit it sometime in the future, but I don't think it's something that I see having enough consensus for us to really continue to work on it at the moment. Okay, um, how about inclusionary zoning, do people have thoughts on that, have any people looked at that? So the inclusionary zoning is that when we're doing multiple, uh, unit, um, construction, that we require a percentage of it to be affordable. It helps, well, one, it creates more affordable housing in town, which I think is a goal that we should have, um, because I think that's important. And two, it helps us meet our needs in trying to get at least close, well, it doesn't really get us closer to our required, um, four DB, but it helps us stop falling as far behind. So, do people have thoughts on to the, to the high level inclusionary zoning?
I guess, I, I, in, inclusionary zoning can mean a lot of different things, and it's unclear to me, I mean, we haven't had very much, what I'm gonna say, single-family residential built in the last fifteen years, but does inclusionary zoning include single-family residential?
Well, this would be if you build seven or more units, or eight, would, eight or more.
More than seven.
Eight or more units at a time, so that can be apartment units, if you do a subdivision with ten units, then, then it would kick in, if you're doing any single-family house, it doesn't kick in, if you're doing, uh, you'd have to do multiple single-family houses, eight or more, at one time.
Okay, uh, it, well, the subdivision is eight or more, it could build, that could occur over an extended period of time. So I, I guess practically speaking, what if, what if, I mean, this is the part that I don't understand with single-family residential, practically speaking. Somebody's building, uh, on money at a lot, seven hundred fifty thousand dollar houses, do you mean have to build a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar house and sell it to somebody for two hundred and fifty thousand?
No, if you're, so it's, so if you're building, you mean like a ten, ten?
Yeah, yeah.
If you're doing a ten-division subdivision, then one of those houses would have to have an affordability restriction on it. So you would, you would build it according, I mean, you would, you would. So you would, you would build it according, I mean, you would, you would potentially take, either take a loss there or it'd have to be, you'd have to get money from some other place.
Or.
Or factor into the.
Is there, is there a situation where in that kind of circumstance, they could buy out and throw money into a pot?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be.
A fee in lieu of, yes, there would be a fee in lieu, right?
That could be, yes.
Yes.
Or they could be, or they could be constructed offsite.
Or even constructed offsite and.
I'm not.
But it's not, like, we have some zoning, actually, it's in our zoning, that if you provide, like, a cost or subdivision and you have more than a certain amount of open space, you, you get a bonus the other way, which I kinda like that better than. This is punitive because you're telling people, uh, that basically they can't sell, you know, units for the price that they wanna sell them for and the way they wanna sell them, you're forcing them to, to subsidize something else, which may be fine. But I kinda like it better the other way where you create an incentive for people to do something that they might not have done otherwise.
You could probably put both options in. And the way I've seen it done is that you usually, you have, you can either, so you build ten, right? One has to be affordable restriction, the other don't. If, you can do it that way, or you can give a payment to, say, the Affordable Housing Trust, just do that.
Yeah.
Or you're building another ten somewhere else and you can do two in that, or you can do part of apartments, or you can even, I don't know, trade credits. Some places do it like trading credits, like net metering credits. You know, I mean, there, there are different ways to go about it. Um, mostly it applies to multifamily housing, right? So if you're building two hundred units, um, twenty of them have to be affordable. And it's, that's where it really, that's where it mostly applies. Because if the math isn't gonna work, instead of doing eight, you're gonna do seven. And that's the realistic of it, how it's gonna work, or you're gonna make a arrangement. So those are all, I mean, it can be drafted in multiple different ways. It's more of the concept of requiring developers to, um, come with affordable units rather than we do no affordable, no affordable, no affordable, someone builds two hundred forty B apartments. That's really our logistic alternatives. So, uh, anybody else thoughts on, on an inclusionary zoning bylaw in general? Downsides, I'm not sure that I see much in the way of downsides to it. I don't think people are gonna stop building in town because we have it. Most, many towns are crazy, you know? I don't know what the percentage is, but I see it growing and growing and it doesn't hinder development that I've seen. Aaron, Peter?
I think it, i- i- if, if we move forward with this, I think it should be something that helps us get to that ten percent threshold. Um, otherwise, I, honest, I don't, I don't see a lot of value to it, uh, if, 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 it, it, there's not a plan to get there. Because if, if we're, we're not getting there, uh, it, we're, we're, we're still requiring developers to, um, include, uh, affordable housing in a portion of their develop, their multifamily developments. Um, but that, that, that seems like it could happen quicker, um, you know, getting more affordable units online if the forty B process actually did move forward. So if we do this, I, I, I would, I would like to, to understand how that gets us closer to that goal. So we, so we can have some local control. I saw some information in, in the materials online that if we put a, a certain percentage online per year, then we essentially get a, like, a year or a two-year. Yeah, uh, which I, 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 I think it's, 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 it's worth trying to understand how we can craft, if, 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 if we're gonna go forward and craft this, maybe, maybe use that as a, as a basis for crafting. Because I, I, I think we really, we need to get to a spot, and I, I think the ultimate goal is, is that local control.
Right, okay.
I agree with that. I appreciate you putting together the materials. Can you, can I ask you to summarize the memo?
Didn't know we were talking about this. I, I, I would really be just reading it from the.
Well, I don't want you to just read it. I mean, is there a way that you can sort of maybe just capture the recommendation portion? Or if it's just reading it, then, you know, we don't need to do that.
Does the safe harbor provision, does that mean we have more time before we have to entertain a forty B project? Is that what that?
Oh, if you have an inclusionary zoning, you, you have a free harbor.
No, if you get, if you, if you bring online a certain number of units in a certain time period, even if you're still below the ten percent, that gives you a grace period where you can still, you're in the safe harbor provision.
Oh, I see.
So an accessory, a, a, um, inclusionary zoning bylaw, which then forces that, can trigger that safe harbor, which even gives us more time to get things online. So even if this is just maintaining, right, because at, at, if we're requiring ten percent, we're not gaining, but we're not losing. If we're requiring twelve percent or thirteen percent, then maybe we start to actually gain stuff. But even with just the ten percent, we at least can start triggering some safe harbor provisions where we still have local control, uh, over projects, which is a good, which is a good thing.
Well, I mean, to Aaron's point, it might make sense, Gene, sometime to have a discussion on sort of where we are, what's in the number, how we got there. I mean, one of the things that, um, that I think is an interesting phenomenon is we have leakage out of our affordable housing because when units, condo units come up, they're affordable, we can't find people to take them over. So we're starting to lose them. And so we went in the opposite direction. So we deal with large dense projects, but we don't have the benefit of the affordable use, uh, units anymore. So we probably as part of it need to understand that. So it's, you know, maybe a little bit out of our total scope, but I still think it would be a good idea to look at it.
I think that would answer, it would help with a, kind of a common theme that I'm hearing and feeling, which is why. And so if we could see those numbers laid out in a way that's understandable for not just us but other folks, it would explain why.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, so maybe we can get some data on where we actually stand with affordable housing, just in, I'm sure we have it somewhere.
Well, is that what you're referring to, Peter, in the memo, that, that there's nine hundred and thirty-one units, which is only eight point seven percent, and we have to get to ten?
Yeah, it's part of John's comment.
Okay, are the ones that are falling off?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a spreadsheet in the housing production plan I'll include the next time.
I just think, uh, if we had, like, a list of what was in the affordable units, where they are, it would give us a sense, you know, how many are through forty Bs, how many are through section eight, how many are through other sort of things? It just gives some context.
Two other things. It would be helpful also to get some, um, input from local developers. I don't know what conversations you've had, but even just kind of some anecdotal input of what they think about these. I'm sure they encounter them elsewhere. Uh, if there's heavy objections, no objections, if they help. I just think in the two, two and a half years I've been on the board, I don't remember any projects really coming with affordable housing components. Do you? Does anybody in the last couple of years?
No, you hardly ever see them, unfortunately, with the planning board. You see them more with the forty Bs.
Right, so I'd, I'd like to see them.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think this is pretty much the only way I can think of that we're going to, because otherwise they're gonna avoid us. Um, so.
In fact, there's a lot of communities have it, but they haven't.
Generated a ton of units. And so is that why we have five hundred and eighty multifamily units before us in the last three years? So, because we don't have it. Um, so a lot more communities are going to it, but I will say they haven't generated the number of units people expected them to generate.
What are they gen, are they gen, is it because people aren't building or because they're contributing in lieu funds? And that's what I saw, at, at least when I was working in Beverly, that's what I saw, is that the developers really didn't want to restrict themselves. They wanted to just give the in lieu funds. Here, this is the formula. Here's the money. And then that goes into a.
It's like more of a single-family housing, but that's the case.
Right, right. So it didn't seem to hit the, it helps affordable housing, but not in the way that the bylaw or the ordinances were meant to. So it's just something to consider as well.
I think it also depends on how you write the bylaw. So if you have tighter restrictions, there are some towns that require both units and a payment in lieu of, um, then it kind of forces, um, you to actually build the units because it, ultimately, it is cheaper to build the units than to, you know, have a pool of money.
To your point, John? I'd be more comfortable with in lieu if you're building a ten-family subdivision and th- your numbers are, margins are tighter and the styles of the house and stuff like that, you know, it doesn't meet with, with your, your numbers. But if you're building a hundred and fifty apartments, it doesn't matter, you know, they're all gonna really be the same, whether you're, it's affordable or not affordable. So I'd be more inclined to make those be built. And that's gonna really put a dent in your affordable numbers and actually provide some meaningful affordable housing. And then anything that gets contributed to a affordable housing fund, then we can use those for single-family homes, which I think are great projects or first-time home buyer stuff.
Do you have a sense of how many communities and distribution have adopted this?
I, I just don't have it at the top of my head. I think it's two hundred and eighty-one, but I have to, whether I'm confusing it now with ADUs, I'm not sure. But I can give you that number.
Yeah, I think it's, I've seen a lot in the last few years.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, so why don't we keep moving forward with that one and keep working on that one, because I think that has more support. Okay, great. Um, let's, let's just contin, we're gonna just do, continue the, continue, continued public hearings. I just wanna do the ones that we're continuing. And then we'll go to sixteen hundred Ozgood. Continued public hearing, five hundred Great Pond Road, North Andover Country Club. They have requested continuance to twelve, three, nineteen. So we're gonna get a motion to continue the public hearing for five hundred Great Pond Road to twelve, three, nineteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Three fifteen Turnpike Street, Verizon Wireless, also requested to continue until twelve, three, twenty, nineteen. We got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Zero Chicken Road, trustees of reservations, request for continuance until twelve, three, nineteen. The motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sick, new public hearing, sixteen hundred Ozgood Street, sixteen hundred Ozgood Street LLC. Application for definitive subdivision approval for one lot plan on parcel of land consisting of approximately thirty-one point oh-six acres located on the west side of Ozgood Street and what is known as sixteen hundred Ozgood Street. Premises affected is located within the I two zoning district. Oh, they wanted to go last, later. That's right, okay. So we're gonna put that till later on. I forgot. Uh, okay, four High Street, RCG West Mill, NALC, application for definitive subdivision approval in accordance with MGL chapter forty-one, section eighty-one O, eighty-one T and eighty-one U in North Andover code, section two-five-five dash five point five to subdivide fifth, map fifty-four, lot one, map fif, three, lot twenty-five to three lots, and to create a new subdivision road. The proposed subdivision is located within the downtown overlay District A, Historic Mill, underlying IS, R four and general business. Application for definitive subdivision approval in accordance with MGL chapter forty-one, eighty-one O, eighty-one T and eighty-one U to subdivide map fifty-four, fifty-three lots, one and twenty-five into three lots in the downtown overlay District A, Historic Mill area. Underlying IS are four zoning districts. Also, four High Street, Avalon Bay Communities, Inc., application for District A, definitive master plan, special permit in accordance with Town in North Andover zoning bylaw one ninety-five eight point two O. Applicant proposes the construction of a market-weighted rental multifamily residential community known as Avalon North Andover, consisting of two hundred studio, one, two, and three-bedroom units to be contained within three separate four and five-story buildings and clubhouse comprised of approximately a hundred eleven, two hundred twenty-one thousand square feet, approximately a hundred eleven, a hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and three square feet and five thousand one hundred forty-two square feet, along with an outdoor pool, parking, stormwater management facilities, landscaping, signage, other improvements. Approximately nine point four-four acres of land located downtown overlay District A, Historic Mill area, underlying IS and R four zoning districts with all buildings proposed within the boundaries of the underlying IS district. Hello, okay, um, for the record, uh, we went on a site walk on Saturday.
Sunday.
Sunday, Sunday, November twenty-fourth. Thank you to, um, Avalon for staking and spray painting. That was helpful. Thank you to everyone who came out, board members, uh, community members. It was a miserable day weather-wise, but I think it was still worthwhile. Um, so I appreciate everyone coming out and doing that. So thank you. Monica, where are we in the process?
All right, well, in terms of, so, um, right now, we have the definitive subdivision, um, before us. And we have been given until December seventeenth to make, uh, a final decision on that. Revised plans have been submitted. They've been distributed for peer review. Um, one of the big parts of this project involved, uh, DPW. They were trying to realign the, uh, it would be the definitive subdivision road with the, um, with the entranceway to the East Mill, um, parking lot. Um, so that information was included in, in the, um, in their plan that they've updated.
What about other, uh, so that's on the subdivision, on, on the special permit? Where do we stand with, um, peer review, stormwater, traffic, all, all of that?
Um, the stormwater review is still ongoing. I did receive information from the civil review, but that came this afternoon. And to be honest, I have not had a chance to, to look at it since, because of the late submission. Um, but they did submit that. Um, in terms of the fiscal impact, that went for outside peer review and that was included in your packet. And they were looking for more information from the applicant, which, uh, the applicant, uh, should provide. The peer reviewer did want to know if at some point you would like them to come to the meeting to discuss further.
We can talk about that. Okay.
And in terms of other departments, um, they've been reviewing, um, what's been submitted. Um, so, you know, the, the project's been changing, so we still have, uh, some of those outstanding as well. And they still have to go before, well, no, they're out of the conservation district now, so that, that helps.
From your perspective, is there guidance or information you need from the board at this point?
Um, what we, I'd like more information as to if you'd like the peer review consultant to come back in. And stormwater is still outstanding as well, but those are issues that probably can be handled in the next couple, couple of weeks. Um, so what the applicant, at least what Avalon is looking for, is more information on, uh, related to the site visit, um, massing and scale and, and things of that nature. There may be more, but I'll let them say what they say.
All right.
So we wanted to take them in order, so we wanted to talk about the subdivision road at this point and answer any questions that you might have regarding that, um, and walk you through that. And, uh, especially because that one's on, you know, a different time, timeframe. Um, so we think we've answered all of the questions, and so we wanna clear up anything else that you might have. And then, uh, and then hopefully we can move towards a decision on that subdivision road.
And then this is what we'll do. We'll do board comments, questions about the subdivision. Then I'll open it up to public comment just about the subdivision and the subdivision road. Okay, so that's really the layout of the road, where that's standing and that, because that's a separate permit. Let's talk about that. And then we'll see where we are on that, because we may very well vote on that separate than the special permit.
I was gonna say, I think we have to make it clear to everybody that a subdivision is a very narrow thing. All we're doing is we're creating the road and the lots, and we're not making any opinion or finding or judgment on what will be built in the lots. That's an important differentiation. Obviously, there's a little bit of a relationship at some level between the two, but, um, you could very readily approve the subdivision and not necessarily agree with what's being built. And I think that's, that's an important distinction that everybody here should know, yeah.
The subdivision would need to be, meet the legal definitions for what's needed subdivision. And it would need to basically, um, to be able to support kind of the largest, um, project that's being proposed, right? It's, that project doesn't get submitted or approved, so it'd be, if it gets approved at a smaller level, then that subdivision would still be supportive of that. But that's, it's more of a base that's required before we get to that next step. So, it's a good point. Okay, so.
So let me walk you through, so we have, we, we came to you, we presented some subdivision plans, or Avalon did. We, we were, had some changes based on DPW's comments. Um, we submitted those and essentially, like Monica said, uh, that included shifting the driveway to align with the East Mill driveway. And, and as we discussed before, that was due to traffic. So the traffic numbers that came out showed that there were more people taking a right onto High Street than there were going up Prescott Street. Um, and, and by moving it, um, further away from that Prescott Street intersection, it actually created, was sa, was safer because there's, uh, because of the way that there's a blind, there's a, the road curves in such a way that, um, that it made more sense to sort of move it further away. So, um, so I don't know, Brian, if you wanna, do you want, want Brian to walk you through sort of what those changes were? Because that was, that was the major one.
Sure.
The second one, let me just go through the other one, was that we, um, we moved some of the parallel parking spaces, which we have on here. Uh, before, we had four parallel parking spaces that were leading up towards, uh, the Sutton Pond condominiums. We, we kept two there and two, um, in front of the hill that used to be a, a detention pond. And then, um, we also changed the entrance and exits, which Avalon showed last time they were here, so that, um, so that they're pulled away from the, the. so that, um, so that they're pulled away from the, the, um, the drive, the, the High Street, um, intersection. And also aligns with the loading dock that we have. We have two loading dock bays that are active right now. And so the trucks can actually perform just like they, they normally do. They can pull into the parking lot and back in if they need to. I actually saw one today, and it was actually going, I think, in the orange line, so, um, so it's, it would work within that. We did meet with DPW and Tech. They were okay with the changes, and DPW did send that over. Tech also did send over, we, we did review those, um, before the meeting. And the one issue they had with the subdivision road was that our parking spaces were, um, a little smaller. I think typically a parallel could be eight by twenty, is that right?
Right.
And that's what ours were, and your ordinance is eight by twenty-two. Um, we think we can make that work. So we'll, we'll make that adjustment to the plan, uh, rather than asking for a waiver. I also just submitted the waivers in a table format. Um, you didn't have that before, so you have all the waivers. They're all pretty standard waivers, and we can go through those after Brian goes through the plans. Um, and then I guess the, the last, um, the last piece is that, um, is that I think that the public comment that we've heard is that, um, that the roadway, that there, there may be some issues with, with trucks. And again, we, we moved that driveway so the trucks can come in and out. We don't think they'll be a problem, and we just wanna remind the board that there was ten loading docks that used to be serviced by this. I mean, there were, there were six at the, the eighty-five thousand square foot building that was taken down. There were four at the West Mill that now we have two, and we're still, you know, we're, we're providing that access still to Sutton Pond. We don't seem to have an issue. Um, there seems to be, we be, we're able to move traffic around. And we think actually by making this roadway a subdivision road, it actually will service better than how it works now, which is really just a pathway over a parking lot. So we think that actually by having this subdivision road serving these three different par, properties, or these three different owners, will actually, um, hopefully clean up traffic and, and make it, make it safer for everyone, so. Private. We're gonna keep it private. Um, we do have sidewalks and curbing and landscaping and everything that, that, um, that actually will help as well. Cause right now, it's sort of a mishmash of people walking and, and driving, and, um, so it'll, it'll hopefully keep people on the sidewalk. Um, you know, have some, some, some walkways back and forth between the properties and, um, and then also, uh, have lines on the road where right now it's not striped, it's just a driveway, uh, so. There are nine?
Uh, I believe a lot, it was ten.
I'm sorry, ten.
I believe ten, yes.
I guess I'm just struggling with the point of those. Just to make the numbers work, cause.
I think part of it is that, but part of it also is, is it, it, um, it slows, slows things down. It makes it more of like a roadway, right? Yeah, I mean, well, it depends. It depends on who you talk to.
Well, but, I mean, I know where you're gonna get, you're gonna remind us to get like how far with the, with the paved surface, they, yeah, okay, so maybe I think we could hit some.
I'm just struggling with the parallel parking, so if you could just talk about where those are.
Okay. So I'm gonna turn it over to Brian, and he can walk you through the changes, and then we can answer any questions.
If you could scroll down to sheet C one oh nine, that would be great. Thank you. So, I, I think in a, in a nutshell, we, we didn't change our design approach at all, so when I presented last time. Um, we are proposing a twenty-six foot wide paved roadway to thirteen foot lanes. What's currently out there is approximately twenty-four feet wide, so it's a slight increase over what's there. Um, and you can see on this drawing where we do have parallel stalls primarily on the, I'll call it Plan North, which is essentially the north side of the, of the parcel as well. And as, uh, as Tanya indicated, we did move, there was a curb cut originally that went into that first parking area much closer to High Street. That got pushed back for safety reasons and based on some comments by the board as well. Excuse me, those, those parallel stalls, and again, as, as, as Tanya indicated, and as the DPW's peer reviewer pointed out, uh, we drew those at eight by twenty, that we will modify those to eight by twenty-two, so they meet the local bylaw. It shouldn't have any, any impact on any of the other geometry on the roadway. Um, the roadway itself will have, um, full drainage, full design, which gives it a cross section that's typical of a, of a, a roadway, meeting the, the subdivision requirements within the community for the roadway itself and the geometry of the roadway with vertical curves, with cross slope, with drainage, and with grading. You know, I think that the, the biggest difference is we were originally following essentially along the, the driveway that currently exists, which was somewhere in between, uh, the East Mill and the, the road across the street. And we did a couple of different concepts for the DPW where we looked at both the concept where we aligned parallel with, um, the roadway across the street and with this alignment here, and we looked at specifically, um, site distance and approach speeds on High Street, or, yeah, along High Street, and determined that, um, based on the approach speeds and based on the geometry on that road, as you head further to the north on High Street, that this did provide a better site distance. And also, it aligns with a lot, with a higher traffic use, which is the East Mill across the street. So from both of those reasons, alignment that, as shown here with the, with the East Mill directly across the street is what made the most sense, and the DPW agreed with. So I think in, in a nutshell, those are basically the changes. They're very minimal, other than it's a, it's a little bit of an S curve now, where it was a little bit straighter before, but all the design criteria that, that we provided originally have been met here as well. Uh, I believe we're calling for slow gradient curving, certainly around the, um, the entrances, which is what's required in the bylaw.
The whole length of it, what's gonna be your differentiation between the, uh, road surface and the, and the, uh, uh, the path? And are you gonna have sidewalks on both sides or what side?
One side.
One side. And there, there is slow gradient curving shown on the entire length of that road, that's right. So there, there is curving that's differentiating the road from the, uh, from the landscaped areas and, you know, from the, from the sidewalks as well.
And you're gonna plant like every fifty feet?
Uh, the, the planting plan, I mean, there, there are, there are plants that are shown on here. There are also plants that are associated with the, uh, the special permit that are much more of a landscape that's associated, you know, with an enhancement to that project than just for the subdivision road. But yeah, there, there are street trees that are proposed in accordance with the requirements in the, the local bylaws.
And the, uh, where the trucks pull out, could you show about where that is and how that's, you've mitigated that from before?
Uh, I don't, I don't have a pointer. I apologize, but it's, oh, thank you, Ed. So, this right here is where the, uh, truck entrance is, the loading docks for the West Miller right here. So, um, we actually did provide, um, truck turning, uh, sweep diagrams that show that a trailer truck, a fifty-five foot trailer truck can, can enter into the site and can maneuver into these stalls, and then can leave the, the site as well, within the limits of the, the curbing and the layout that's shown.
And they also could pull up into the, if they needed to.
Right. There, there's also an ability for, you know, if it needs a re, you know, a reshot for a less experienced driver, there's an ability for pull-up in the opposite parking areas or entry areas.
And the, the end of the roadway is where it crosses onto the Sutton Pond?
That's correct. The roadway ends right here at where the, the driveway is for the Sutton Pond condominiums, right there.
Do they have any deeded access, or is it easement, or is it just really at the pleasure of RCG for them to use that?
They have an easement, uh, that, um, that took to cross to High Street. We have, we, we can provide them an easement to cross to High Street. We're allowed to, to move that easement, um, as long as it still provides access.
Uh, that, so that easement's in place now?
It is, and actually you guys have a copy of it. It was, it was part of the materials we sent.
And again, um, if emergency vehicles are going in, how and where do they turn around?
Going into where?
To, actually anywhere along the length of the road. I mean, it, it, the point is normally what you see on a road, uh, is if it sort of comes to an end, it, on the roadway, you have a provision for turnaround on the roadway. This doesn't. I don't think it necessarily has to, but I wouldn't understand how you're going to actually accommodate that, uh, turnaround. Cause if, if, you know, obviously if a truck went to the end to the beginning of Sutton Pond to come turn around, it would have to either go into Sutton Pond or into some other place, so I'm just trying to understand how you're doing that.
So, from an emergency access point of view, if there is an emergency, they would be responding to a, a dwelling or a facility here. So, if a fire truck is responding to the Avalon Bay project, and we also provided, um, the, the truck sweep analysis for the, the largest fire truck that North Andover has, and I believe, uh, Avalon also met with the fire department to get approval on that as well. But if, if a fire truck comes down the subdivision road for Avalon Bay, they would enter into the driveway here. And there is ability within the site for circulation, uh, to get into the site and to turn around on the site and then exit back out onto the subdivision road. Similarly, if it's, if it's heading to the West Mill, and I'm not sure if it would end, access along this end, but, but it could access into any of these parking areas here for the West Mill. If it was accessing into the Sutton Pond, um, condominium complex, it would be essentially just as it is today, where they would come down the road, go into the complex, and the turnaround, and the, you know, whatever needed to happen would happen on that site. So we, we don't think that, uh, having a, you know, a hammerhead or a, a lollipop subdi, uh, you know, cul-de-sac on here actually provides any benefit or value to access or egress for, for the project.
Can you?
Do you have the truck there?
Hold on, can you, uh, just, oh, yeah. So is this for, is this for two trucks?
There's actually four bays. We've used the two that are closest to that parking lot.
So, are, are you saying that a truck can pull out and make that turn?
Yes.
You are?
Yep.
From this lane?
Yep.
Yeah.
And how many degrees is that turn?
Uh, I don't know how many degrees it is. What, what we use is a, a truck package, um, within our CAD design software, where we show, you can, you can traverse a travel lane, so we drive in, and then you can back in, and then we show that truck leaving. And there's, there's certainly a level of swing that has to happen with a trailer truck coming out of here. And there is some lane crossing that would happen with a trailer truck taking a hard right turn, but it can be done within the radii. And in fact, we adjusted these radii to meet the requirements of a trailer truck for that.
A truck here cannot successfully pull out if another truck is here, because it has to first swing over here?
No, it, it means that if a truck pulls out here, they have to wait until there's not a car coming up the road.
And then crossing. Parallel parking on the far side of the street, does that also interfere?
No, it doesn't hit the parallel parking. It misses the parallel parking. It stays within, within the, the travel lanes.
It's not intuitive, looking at it, that it's possible.
Agreed. And, and we've also, you know, as, as Tanya indicated, we've, we've provided alignment with the driveway across the street. If it does take, you know, a couple of tries to get a truck in and out, it, it can certainly happen.
Yeah. Anyone else have questions? Okay, um, why don't we take public comment, and then we'll discuss where we go from there? So, public comment, this is just right now about the subdivision. We're gonna talk about the special permit next. So, like John said, this is about the road and how it's constructed, the length, the width, um, where the road is located, not anything else.
It also defines the three lots.
Right. Yeah. Okay, um, yeah.
I have an issue with the parking along the roadway also. I just don't see the need for it, and it's just gonna make it more congested, and then if there's, it's in the winter, when there's snow, it's gonna make the road even smaller. And with the trucks going, backing in and out, that's less room. If we were trying, if I'm trying to get out in the morning to go to work, uh, it's, there's no way, it's hard to get around the trucks. And I just think with the trucks turning out, and if there's cars there, it's just gonna make it more difficult. And if it's only ten or eleven spaces, is it really needed to be there? Where it's just gonna, I'm just.
I, I agree with that, and it's not necessarily the, the cars that are parked. It's that if they're coming in to park at that time, when everybody's kind of leaving and trucks are coming, it's already asking a lot, and it doesn't seem to provide much benefit. So, I mean frankly, I'd rather, if, if you're, if you wind up missing by four spaces or six spaces, I'd rather waive six spaces and have the parallel parking spaces. Me, that's my opinion.
And, and keep the road the same dimension, or then?
No, no, keep the road the same dimension.
So it would be extra wide?
Yeah, yeah. Keep it the width and get rid of the parallel parking spaces.
I agree.
Cause I, I just don't, I don't, I don't see you, I, I'm not sure if I'm coming there, that I wanna parallel park there with all the cars going by and with the other stuff. I mean, it's a little bit closer. I'd rather everyone just go in and park and stuff like that. Like you said, I think, I think David talked about like not really expecting all the parking spots to be used. I know that's kind of a debate. I, I'd rather not have those and have more free traffic. So, I don't know, people have thoughts on that. Otherwise, I think you really talk with DPW, good sized road. It solidifies where people are gonna go much better than the things that are now. I like the alignment better. All in all, I think the rest is good.
What are we missing about the parallel parking? Why does it appeal to you so much?
I think there's a few reasons why we like it. Um, the way we did, for instance, when we added parallel parking on High Street, previously when there was no parking on High Street, is there is this component of making it feel like it's a, it's a populated area. Cars may be slowing down, maybe they're back in a space, maybe they're pulling out, and you're not whipping down the driveway. If you leave nothing on each side, you get curbs on each side, you got now what's a fifty foot wide right of way from the current condition, which is twenty-four max. So we've added twenty-five feet to the right of way, um, that's existing, that unless we fill that in and make people feel like they should be slowing down, they're starting to enter into a, a parking lot in populous area, that helps us. We like that. Um, and while, you know, it gives people some parking choices if they're pulling in or pulling out, rather than have to pull into and commit into a lot if, if they're just stopping in. So I think from a convenience standpoint for the businesses, there is some component to having those ten spaces that help us a little bit. The roadway that remains clear is still wider than the roadway that exists now. So in addition to having the parallel parking, there's two more feet of roadway plus a place to park your car. We liked a lot of that dynamic, sort of looks like High Street and pulling in. Um, I, you know, I don't think that there's, you know, there's an impression that there's a, a ton of trucks pulling in and out and people parallel park at the same time. There's a lot of traffic created on the road. Um, you know, I don't think there's any, um, dynamic with the trucks that makes much of a difference. For the timing of a truck to be pulling out of the thing while somebody's pulling into a parallel park, and that, that conflict, to me, seems like it would be rare and, and, you know, there'd be a right of way thing, but versus the condition of how it's been for thirty years with lots of trucks pulling in and out across that road, I just don't think there's much detriment to that.
Your analogy with High Street was a little bit persuasive with me, but what, what's your thought about when, you know, you were saying sort of ease of a parking alternative? But every car that pulls in and uses that parallel space now gives you a factor of two when they leave. Cause first they gotta continue in, then they gotta turn around and come out. And that's a multiplier of two, only for eleven cars, so it's not a big, it's not a big factor, but it, but it is times two. Whereas if that same car pulls into the lot, then when they're done, they're just leaving. They're not going in and out. And does that concern you at all that you got that, I, I mean, again, it's only eleven, but you got a multiplier of two, that doesn't?
Yeah, well, there's, there's two that are on the directional side of going out. So of the other eight, you know, who are probably there for the day, for work, you know, I don't know if it creates much conflict. They've pulled back out, and since the roadway is wider, um, you know, if you're a traffic condition and they had to pull in the lot and turn around and come out.
You're saying U-turns to get out?
You could do that, or you could pull into one of the lots and circle around.
Cause that, yeah, I agree. I think your instinct would be to just take a, a U-turn there and.
I don't think any Boston driver would ever take a U-turn.
I'm, I'm not gonna say what I would do, actually. No, um, I, I, I think that the, right, that's, the parallel spaces do provide, it's, it's, it just narrows the road, slows it down. It, we don't need a wide, we, I think we, 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 we're asking for it not to be as wide, quite frankly. I think it could be sixty, we're at fifty.
More traffic on, at Sutton Pond also. I just think it's adding more than.
No, yeah, listen, yeah, exactly.
I don't think it needs to be there for.
Okay, no, we get it. I mean, I don't think it's gonna be a make or break one for, for either, for any size on that, but we get it.
I think it would be better also for Sutton Pond and for the Avalon Bay residents for, uh, pulling out of the, um, into the roadway so that we have a better sightline of cars coming out, and for them, when they're coming out, for cars parked there also.
So we'll, we'll take a vote on it when we vote on the, on the, um.
Are you saying that there's, but let's say you have the width of the road meets the required width, which is wider than what's there now. So let's start there. Are, are you saying that if the road is then? Are, are you saying that if the road is then wider than that, that your concern is that, you know, visually that, um, creates a, a sense of a driver that, oh, I can go faster? Is that part of your concern?
So, I think that's accurate. I think, I mean, I think there's study after study that shows that parallel parking does slow down people. I just don't know how much speed people are gonna get in this parking lot, depending on what time of day it is, right?
Just wanna make sure I-
So I, so I agree with that premise, but like the truck premise, I'm just not sure how applicable it is. And I don't know. Especially with, you know, 100 to whatever number of units going in and out, um, and people coming in and out all day. So I don't know.
And I think if I could also add, if you look at this as a, you know, a small fraction of the traffic that's gonna be on this road that's on High Street that has, I don't know, 10 times as many parallel stalls in this, in this length. I mean, we're talking about a much smaller impact here for something that has much less traffic than what you have right now, right now on the current road that's immediately adjacent to this.
I mean, it's a small point.
I'm not disagreeing. I'm just trying to put it in perspective a little bit as well.
But I agree, Dan. I think, I, I think having the parallel parking on High Street is important to actually slowing down traffic there when you don't have any signs and things like that. Cause when people see, it's the same reason you, you have trees and signs and things like that. Just if you see that visually it looks more populated, you instinctively slow down. Okay, is there anything else we need to discuss on this?
I think there was some other comments.
Yeah, yeah, please.
I'm a live student at Sutton Pond. I guess I've kind of don't, not really see the value of the parallel spots myself. Just in terms of traffic and trucks pulling out and, I mean, we did have a meeting with RCG. They, I'm on the Board of Trustees at Sutton Pond. Um, they were gracious enough to have us over to kind of go over this preliminary drawing. I guess it's somewhat more final now, so we do appreciate that. They've been very transparent dealing with us. My only concern is, is that there's a lot of emergency vehicles that come in and out of Sutton Pond, especially an ambulance. You know, just in terms of trucks coming in and out, you know, they do sometimes block the thing. And if you have parallel spots and people trying to pull out an emergency vehicle trying to get through, you know, to me is a safe, somewhat of a safety issue. Yeah, that's the only way they can-
Or they come in this-
No, they can, they can only come that way because of the weight of the ambulance, of the bus coming over. So, and the other concern that I had is when the road, access road ends at Sutton Pond, you know, it looked like there was, um, and I'm not sure really how to read these things, but it looked like there were plantings and trees there. That, that corner coming out of Sutton Pond, yeah, see, I don't have a pointer, so where the, where it ends, comes into Sutton Pond there? That elbow right there? Yeah, thank you. Um, that's really tight and not really has a great line of sight. And especially if you're gonna, if there's gonna be, the building is gonna be right there, plus some trees. You add some snow banks, the line of sight coming, the traffic coming in and out is kinda tough. Like that, even though there's stop signs there or whatever, we all know people don't, you know, obey signs, but like that. So that would be my only concern, but you know, just really certainly the, um, concern about the ambulance and, or indoor fire trucks getting in and out. Thank you.
Okay. So, so if I could, I, I guess just comment to that, that I, I think that what we have done here is that, I mean, right now the, the pavement does kind of loop back around into this, you know, large parking area that's all paved. That's, you know, somewhat of a free for all that our goal was to formalize that. So, you know, and, and again, in the current plan, we do have parallel parking drawn here. But the, the thought being that, you know, what we have done is taken all of the traffic that would be for anything in these parking lots and keep them much further away from the entrance to Sutton Pond. So our hope was that it, it does formalize some of that and fix some of the current-
No, and I, I understand that. It was just, it was just like a line of sight. It's all, you know, it's hard to see now, but you know, all of that being put in there and then you add snow to it and everything is just, it's a safety line of sight type thing, so.
The lecterns talk and I do wanna move on to the special permit cause I think we're getting kinda stuck on a, kind of a small issue. So last one unless we do-
Could you go back to the, so I'm looking at the parking lot, the previous, the pre, the parking lot, uh, up? I'm sorry, maybe it was down. It was the one that we're looking at.
I, I think you're going in the wrong direction. Further? Further? There, okay. So this parking lot in the lower right-hand corner, I don't know if this is deliberate, but it's got the arrows going in, in both directions. And I don't know if it's part of what you're considering right now, but I think we should consider making that basically a, 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 a horseshoe that is basically one-way, particularly for the cars that are gonna be coming in off of High Street. We don't wanna encourage them to take the immediate left into that parking lot. I think it's gonna jam up a lot of cars. So I think that if they sort of come in and they go to the second entry and they enter there and then we force them only to exit, then they quickly exit and they get right back out there. I don't know if it's part of, of, of your consideration on this one.
Did, did you see what I was saying?
Where's High Street? Instead of allowing this, make it one-way so you have to go this way. The reason being that cars coming in and going left here will cause a lot more problem than cars coming in and going left here. Yeah, make it a U. In that parking lot, which is right next to, you know, that, the existing building, just this parking lot right here.
Any thoughts on that?
Just, that's the existing condition there now, so we get that. I, I think we're fine with restriping that and directing it one-way around.
Okay, that's a good idea. Okay. Any other comments on the subdivision? Monica, is there any other information we need?
The only thing I would say is that the stormwater for this may be dependent on whatever happens with the, um, site plan review. So that might be something you wanna, you wanna think about, but-
Okay, we need to vote on this. I'd like to vote on this first.
So you can always add a condition where, you know, if there's changes to, to, you know, if the next couple of weeks there's changes to the stormwater, then it, it will be changed.
I mean, are there catch basins on this road?
Yes, there's, there's existing drainage kind of in the area and we're proposing a formal system in the roadway. So it, so it basically meets the local requirements. So there are catch basins and manholes. We're, we're proposing a formal system in the, in the subdivision road.
And where do the catch basins split?
Uh, it's, it's actually split. Some of them will go off, but it, currently it's, it's a little bit of a, a mix of what happens out here now. There's some drainage that goes off to the north towards the, uh, the, um, the existing swale and out to the wetland. And there's some of it that previously went around the West Mill building as well. So we're trying to match those conditions as much as possible. And there's a set of catch basins and manholes that I believe is taken to the south around the rear of the building. And then there is some additional drainage that's gonna end up going to the north to a proposed infiltration system and then overflowing back to the wetland where it currently goes.
So, um, can we, on the parking lot with the U-turn, can we just, can we just revise that drive to make that U-turn? So we don't have to condition it, it can just be part of the plan? And then I think real, I mean, unless I, unless people have otherwise, I think this meets what we're looking for. So if we get a draft decision, I think really the parallel parking is the only thing we need to vote on. Do people wanna give the Assistant Planner guidance on that now so she can write the decision or to vote? So John, what do you think? Parallel, no, yes or no?
I don't care.
Don't care, alright, that's fine. So it's good, don't care.
Yeah, don't care.
Don't care. I don't like them, so I'd say no. Peter, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'd rather not have it.
I think they do slow down traffic.
I agree that they do, but do, the question is, is that necessary? So you like them?
I, I don't know.
We're trying to go with something along the way.
Or an hour.
Either you don't put them in, but the provision you could add later, or you do the opposite. You put them in and then you look at it and if it causes a problem, you take them out. I mean, because you, you're, in the real world, you're not gonna know for sure.
You never hear, you're not gonna know.
So that's a nice solution.
Yeah.
Banking the spaces or making them short-term parking spaces? Like what are you looking for?
Well, I mean-
I mean, I need to get a little bit, can down the road a little bit on this and say that after the road's built, make a determination of how you wanna do it. Because something like that might not be a bad idea or, you know, um, I, I mean, in the end, I don't think they're gonna have a major negative impact, but it's, it's like, it's not worth getting lathered up about tent parking spaces.
Okay, um, so I mean, I, I just don't like them, but I don't see enough objection to them. So let's leave them in for now. If people think about it over the next couple of weeks and decide otherwise, then we can talk about it again. But for now, put them in as, well, don't mention them. They're part of the plan, so as of now, just doubt, change the parking lot on, on the plan and then let's get a draft decision based on where we are right now.
Do you want this for the third or for the following meeting? Cause that's, that's one week from now.
Whenever, if you can get it for the third, great. If not, then, then we don't. If we can get it, let's do it. If you can't, that's okay. But that just means that we have to have a meeting on the 17th and snow and all that. So if you can, great. If not, then we'll do it for the next one. Okay?
We'll adjust the parking spaces too, just in, just in case.
Yeah, to the-
And add to the, to the, to the legal limits and we'll make that one adjustment. And then I just noticed too that the lot three and two property line, the, the property line between lots two and three and the plans that you have from Avalon show it aligning with the drive, which is where it should be. And I'm just noticing that it didn't get changed in this one. So we'll make sure you have the updated set.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much, David Blesby, Avalon Bay Communities. Appreciate everyone coming out on Sunday and the bad weather to do the site walk. We also just wanted to give a few updates from what happened over the last couple of weeks. We had the site walk. We've re-flew the balloons today. So there was still some wind, but I think they gave some folks, uh, that, that came out to see them, you know, a perspective on what the buildings would look like. So that was completed. As Monica mentioned, the stormwater peer review is underway. All other peer review comments we've responded to at this point and are sort of going through their second round of, of responses, except for the fiscal, which we expect to respond to prior to the next meeting. We met with Conservation Commission last week. I can give an update on that if anyone's interested. And really the purpose of tonight is to review their perspectives. TAT Ed Bradford's gonna go through the renderings which show the proposed project superimposed into existing conditions photographs. So you can get some perspectives on what the buildings, they're new, they were submitted last week. And we can walk through those and, and they're from High Street and from Sutton Pond Condominiums, as we were asked to provide. And then Tom Miner is here to talk about landscape design and how we've treated the buffers. And finally, we can go through any remaining comments from discussion we couldn't have on the site walk. So with that, I was gonna turn it to Ed and, okay?
So one, I really appreciate coming out. I feel bad for people that we, that the balloons didn't work, but at the same time, we talked about it beforehand that it may not work. It may not give us the best, um, perspective. So we, I'm glad you tried. I'm glad you tried, so thank you. After we go through tonight, where do you think we stand and what's next from your perspective?
From our perspective, it's really responding to peer review comments and then any remaining comments from, from the board. But I think from a technical point of view, we will have responded to everything that we have so far.
So, okay, so let's go through your presentation. You can ask comment, ask questions, make comments. Then we'll take public comment about this portion and then I think, then we'll have to decide if, it's either tonight or next time, we have to have a discussion about numbers and massing and whether we need more information. The question, do we need more information before we have that or are we ready to have that? So I wanna have that discussion about whether we're ready to discuss and if we are, then have that discussion. So, but we'll do that at the end. Okay, go forward.
Monica, is it possible to zoom that out a little bit?
Give me a second.
Just to get it all on one page.
Let's see what I can do. Oop, that's too small. That's the best I can do.
Yeah, okay, well, good evening. Ed Bradford, TAT. And as Dave mentioned, we prepared a series of renderings from, actually from seven vantage points with the intent of showing this evening views from the surrounding neighborhood. I think we focused on interior views in prior presentations, but the intent here is to show views from the surrounding neighborhood, looking in if you will. We have, as I said, seven vantage points, two from High Street, from the frontage along High Street. One, the one that's here now from the Western East Mill and another one from Prescott and High Street. We have three from the residential homes along High Street and then two from the Sutton Pond condominium parking lots. For each of these views, we have captured in existing photographs, uh, two seasons if you will. So we, we show, as this one shows, a view, our photographs that we took in May. And then just about a week ago, we, we came out to the site and shot the same views, our same vantage points to get a, a more current view with, you know, a kind of fewer leaves on the trees, if you will. So most of the deciduous trees this time of year, the, the, um, are pretty bare. So we wanted to capture that perspective for each of these vantage points as well. And then finally, just to describe what we'll be showing here, for each of these vantage points, we have six slides and two sets of three. So, so what we're doing for each season, if you will, is we're showing the existing condition. We, we show a view or photo simulation that shows the original design. So that is the, the design per the original application, two five-story buildings, 250 units and a clubhouse that was integral to the original design.
The original design, let's just do where we're at now, just because we get it, it was reduced, but to be honest, it doesn't matter where we are, where we were, it matters where we are. So let's just do the, especially for the sake of time, let's just do current and what you're proposing.
Okay, well, we could, um, skip over to the, the middle one for each set, if you will. So this first view, as I said, is showing the view looking north bracketing, bracketed by West Mill to the left and East Mill to the right. This shows again the photograph, we've already, we've moved on here.
So this is, this is currencies and current view?
This is existing condition, so, um, we, as I said, we have spring and fall. This will become more important when we get to views probably from, from High Street, residential street. But here from High Street, we, this shows the existing condition, very current condition that we just shot in November. I think if you skip over the next slide, this shows the current design, if you will. So you can see on the left-
Which building is that?
That's Building A on the left. So I think this starts to show our, our design concept really, as we've described. And that's although set back about 260 feet from High Street, we do in the fall have somewhat of an open view corridor to, to Building A. So again, our design intent is to have these brick ends that we think are complementary to the architecture of the mills. But the step down that we, that we made in the revised design from five to four really wasn't done to respond to the mills because as, as we've shown, this end of the building is, is actually at five stories lower than the existing mills. It was really, as we discussed at the last meeting, to step down this end of the building that does have some frontage, if you will, or views from the High Street neighbors. So the, in response to the comments that we heard, that's the reason for stepping down that end of Building A.
Does that have a quick question please? Supposed to be evergreens or those deciduous that still have their leaves on?
The latter, yeah, yeah, those those should be, those are proposed trees that should.
So we at least need a consistent presentation here, right?
Those are, those are proposed deciduous trees.
Proposed deciduous with its leaves in the scene that's showing us no leaves.
Boy, okay, can you?
So this next view shows the existing condition, this is from the intersection of Prescott and High Street. So you can see the West Mill here on the left, Sutton Pond Condominiums just beyond. So this is showing the current design. You can see, again, building here on the left, again, set back quite a way, so not very prominent from this vantage point. But again, to the extent that there are some view corridors through, you can see the approach to the architecture. Again, brick ends, we think complementary to the mills. This is from May, yes, the May photograph. So these next series of views are from High Street. This first one shows 90 High Street on the left and 102, 104 High Street on the right. And this is again, is showing the condition in the existing condition in May. This was the original design, so we've moved on quickly here to the revised design. Building A has, this wing of building A has been removed. There's a one-story clubhouse in place of the five-story wing that we had in the original design. That does open up a view corridor to building A beyond now, that's the building that's furthest from the residential neighborhood. But that is about 230 feet, you know, from the real lot line of these homes and another 200 feet from this vantage point, so about 430 feet away from from where we're standing in this particular view.
The clubhouse is behind there, we don't see it. Building A is, the further one in building B is down further to the right from this.
That's right, yeah, it's not visible in this vantage point.
From from these neighbors, maybe, okay.
And this is the spring shot? Yeah, is there a fall shot?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So here's the same shot taken about a week ago, existing condition. Now again, you got a quick glimpse of the original design, again, the building B is not visible in this, so what you're seeing is building A beyond that that line or existing buffer. That is five stories and you can see the step down towards Sutton Pond to the four-story section.
Okay, so you can't, so you can see stories three, four and three a little bit and you can four and five, but not one and two?
That's right.
Okay. All right, that's helpful, thank you.
So this next view, again, from May, shows the existing condition with 102 to 104 High Street on the left and 108, 110 High Street on the right. You can just get a glimpse here of the Sutton Pond Condominiums beyond. So this shows revisions again that we've made to the design. So again, the wing that was formerly here is, there was a building in this sort of view corridor that was eliminated. The one-story clubhouse isn't visible in this particular vantage point, it's low and screened. You can see the five-story leg of building B stepping down to four stories right there, that's the end of building B. And again, same vantage point for photograph recently taken. So same same condition, same vantage point with the on November photograph. Again, you can see the five-sto- five-story leg of the building stepping down to the four-story end. Building that was here is is no longer, and then the one-story clubhouse is still really not visible in this particular vantage point.
I mean, this is an autumn photo, but the trees, the leaves.
That tree is hanging on to its leaves, yes. So this is the last view that we took from the High Street neighborhood. This shows, again, 108 to 110 on the left and 116 High Street to the right. From this vantage point through, you can see the existing parking lot and the Sutton Pond Condominiums beyond. There you go. Yep. So this, again, with the five-story leg of the building completely removed for for building A that is closest to the neighborhood, it does open up a view corridor, I'm sorry, to the closest leg of building B. It does open up a view corridor to building A beyond. But again, you know, that that is quite a distance away from the vantage point that we're standing. Closest is the four-story leg of of building B.
This is something doesn't seem intuitive here because this looks completely different than the one on the other side of the house on the left. It just doesn't look the same.
It's which facade you're seeing is your primary point of view. I think the other facade, you're seeing the brick end, the four-story brick end is your primary facade. And I think here, you're seeing part of the side of the brick facade and then part of the five-story elevation as well, right, Ed?
Yeah.
As the building turns.
If you refer to the locust map up here, you can, what we have done is indicated with a red arrow the vantage point, so you can get a better sense of of what you're seeing there.
Are you saying, right, the differences that sort of the pivot in is has a card, so the buildings are further away on this one?
I'm sorry, what?
I see how you're saying that the building's a little bit, the end of it is what you see from the other side. Does she don't see the end?
Oh, we're seeing two, the two buildings, you're seeing the closer building, you're seeing the piece of the other building. You're seeing two different buildings.
Yeah, if you look at the locust map, I think that shows it best.
Different angle, then, maybe that's where it is.
That's exactly where it is, yeah.
That's where it is, okay.
So now we have, final two views are from Sutton Pond. This is from the the southernmost parking lot, and this is the the southern wing, if you will, of Sutton Pond Condominium. I guess I should be referring more often to this locust plan because this arrow shows the perspective that this photograph was taken. So again, in the foreground is building A, beyond is is building B. You can see the recent revision of the brick end and the stepping down to four stories at that at that northern end of the building. And then finally, this is a, the the last vantage point here is from the the parking lot within the kind of U-shaped parking courtyard from that vantage point there. This is showing the the most recent condition in November. So from this particular vantage point.
Just have quiet for a little longer, please, and then people come to the podium to make comments.
So from this particular vantage point, building A is not visible, this is building B. So this vantage point, the existing planted buffer cuts off, you know, all but two stories or depending on your location. You can see the step down to four stories at at this end. And again, the reason for the minimal, we think, visual impact from this particular vantage point is just the distance that this building is set back, it's set back about 150 feet from the property line or that hedge row, and of course, from our vantage point, we're further, further than that.
Go landscaping, is that?
Sure.
Is that her?
Okay.
So landscaping plan and I'm like, ask Tom. All right, maybe. Yeah, Monica's going to. I knew it, whatever the land is for, you have to upload it. And Tom has hard copies, if you want to hand those out to them.
This one and the colored rendering.
Yeah, the colored rendering is, yep.
Doesn't seem to be in the right place. Take, give me one moment, please. That is not what it looks like, by the way. I have the one from the 20, let me download the other one. Let's see. I'm going to put the color one up while we wait for the other one to load. These are the ones you submitted this morning.
Work off of this one that you have up on the screen now.
Yeah, why don't you work off of this one, because I don't see that one.
We can work off of this, it's not a problem, just.
You guys ready?
Yeah, we can, we can work with this, go ahead, Tom.
The writer Tom Miner, heart design, can you hear me? Okay. The plan that's currently up on the on the screen right now is a preliminary version of the the plan that I just handed out to you. The main thing I want to convey is that through some aerial photographs and some and some site site views and site onsite site photographs, we were able to visually locate some of these existing trees and woods woods lines and along with that, we were able to to infill those with predominantly evergreen trees on this northerly border here, to fill in the understory and to fill in any gaps in the existing trees. These trees will be remaining, they're they're not intended to be disturbed. And along the southerly property line here, it's not as visible. There's a, as you all know, there's a a dense hedge row of evergreen varieties along this this property line here. And we've infilled those a little bit on this end here where there where there aren't any and also with deciduous trees between the building and the the existing evergreens, where there's a little space, we're using a columnar, deciduous shade tree that it'll get as tall, but it stays stays more narrow, so it doesn't interfere with the buildings. Along the back of building B, between the 25-foot wetland and the 50-foot wetland, we've got a a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees, informally spaced to to provide some some buffering to the neighbors, looking across the the, well, it's considered wetland, but the the existing playfield. And that'll that'll get up, those are various height, evergreen trees, eight to 10 feet. Deciduous trees are three three-inch caliper, those will, depending on the the species, those will get between six, 12 to 16 feet high, differing textures, differing fall colors. The as we move to the interior of the site, we've planted the parking lot islands with deciduous shade trees. And around the the interior courtyard amenity space, we're just using smaller, smaller flowering trees to so that we're not shading shading the pools. And between the buildings and the walks, we're doing smaller flowering trees to provide a a little bit more scale and interest along the along the walkways. We're not, I don't have a blow-up of the the typical buildings, but we have done a preliminary typical building foundation planting plan where we're doing evergreen, mix of evergreen deciduous shrubs of of varying heights to to, oh, there we go, there's the newer one, to soften the the foundation and provide some relief from the vehicles parked adjacent to the buildings with headlights and provide some privacy to the to the ground floor patios. The amenity area has not, the scope has not changed from previous submissions, we're still, we still have a pool, we still have a shade pergola with adjacent patio for for grilling. Fire features, plenty of seating and activity lawn adjacent to that area. Lighting has has not been designed yet, but as we progress, that will be a, typically, we use LED fixtures and we use, we use 12-foot poles and supplement it with bollard lighting around the pool area and amenity area.
Okay, um, why don't we, was anything, anything anybody wants to say or before we get to public comment? So why don't we do public comment and then we'll talk about everything that we've seen tonight and everything that we've seen at the site visit and to date, again. I just want a fence put up because I don't want anyone coming onto my land. And I'm impacted really a lot. And you didn't see from the pictures taken from the street, that was just my garage. If you went on my back deck, I'm not going to have a garden in my yard anymore because I mean, the height is just too high. I know we can't stop it, but I still think 200 is a little bit too many. And consider my deck because of balloons, they were high up today and I was there and I went out back, but I do want that fence incorporated into the design. Thank you.
As I've said to the butters that are, you know, interested in talking to me, that I'm willing to meet anyone in their backyard and talk about fencing or potentially landscape improvements on their side of the property line that may buffer any impacts. So I'm happy to do that on a case-by-case basis and I.
Well, there's one case, and look, they guys already talked, so that's great. Thank you, to both of you, actually, to both of you for doing that.
Can pass them at 110 High Street. I just wanted to say that the renderings from the street were from the street, not from our houses, not from my kitchen window, not from anywhere that's kind of relevant to what we would really be looking at. Because all of those were either the trees were blocking it, or the houses were in the way, or the garage was in the way. It wasn't really accurate. And from the vantage point, at least for the Sutton Pond, when you're halfway back in the parking lot, the people on the second, third floor, fourth floor of their buildings, completely different, and I think it's an unfair rendering of the view. And since I'm a director butter, I would like a fence along the back of mine, lots of tall trees, if it happens.
And I know we did go to your deck and backyard, so I know combining that with the pictures we have, we get it.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Sally Fennemore, 90 High Street. I have something that I want to read, but I also, before I started, I just wanted to say that in regards to the discussion earlier about the in-law apartments, you all spoke about your concerns and your opposition because of the character of the neighborhood. I don't know how this does not affect the character of our historical neighborhood. So, just want to put that out there. To the members of the planning board, I'm not going to stand here before and restate all of the reasons why we are opposed to this project. You have all spent many hours listening to the concerns of the neighbors and the townspeople and many more, reading the letters and the emails, ours included. For this, we thank you for your patience and reflection. We know it is not an easy job. That said, we do want to reiterate that we fail to see how this project helps the town. While you cannot select every project that comes before you, town leadership and management has a responsibility to make decisions in the best interest of the town. Building apartments in the heart of the historic Mill District is a missed opportunity to bring the right mix of commercial and residential properties. In the event that you should decide to vote for this development, we want to express tonight some of our hopes and requests. First and foremost, we sincerely appreciate any effort to keep the buildings to no more than three stories. Five stories is monstrous. When I drive by the development on Barker Farm, I am dumbfounded by the sheer size of the buildings and also looking at the renderings tonight. While we appreciate the compromise by the developer to mitigate the size of the building directly behind our home on High Street, we are concerned that this care was not taken with all of the neighbors on High Street as well as our neighbors at Sutton Pond. As we previously presented, there will be an effect on home values in the immediate vicinity of this development. Your decision tonight, or whenever you make it, will have a direct negative impact on the home values of our neighbors, of your neighbors in North Andover. Having a smaller-scale building will hopefully lessen the impact. We would like to see a fence erected along the High Street backyards to help create a buffer between the yards and the buildings. An eight-foot fence would help to alleviate sound and light as well as prevent people from cutting through the yards. To help with the buffer and create privacy, we ask that Avalon plant large trees with dense year-round cover. We also ask that no balconies be put on the side of the building facing the High Street neighbors. Although the traffic studies don't seem to show that this project will impact the current roads and traffic conditions, we have concerns about the intersection of Prescott and hope that this will be addressed in some way, as well as the Sutton Pond, Sutton intersection and the Water Street intersection. Our second concern is the condition of the sidewalk on High Street near the Mills. As you saw when you did the site visit, the sidewalks in front of our house and along the road are in horrible condition and basically non-existent. There is no elevation, so drivers often come around the curve of the road faster than they should and end up on the sidewalk. There are many children and elderly neighbors who use these sidewalks to get to school or take their daily walks. We would like to see the condition of these sidewalks improved. Perhaps Avalon can work with the town to address this. At the site visit, you saw very clearly the amount of water that is present in the building site. We hope that you will consult and work with conservation to address these concerns about where all of that water will go once the construction happens. Finally, we ask that during construction, during the construction phase of any project that is approved, the neighbors are taken into consideration. We spend countless hours in our backyard, especially in the warmer months. The noise level of construction so close will hugely impact our daily lives. The dust debris, noise pollution, and vibrations of construction are all very concerning. We ask that there never be any construction on Sundays and that Saturday construction should be limited, if at all. We ask that no constructions start before 7:30 during the week and 8:00 a.m. on Saturdays. This is not an extensive nor comprehensive list of requests, and other community members likely have their own. In the event that you are going to approve this project, we would appreciate another board meeting to specifically deal with the intent of fielding ideas for mitigation from the community. Thank you.
Again, I speak with David about the specific requests for fencing. I think it should be individualized to the people that want them, and I think it is best to be on your property. I mean, they're paying for it is the idea, but on your property and talk about it. If you go to her house, the trees that she has on the side are really good trees that I think you should potentially consider using because they're tall, but they also really kind of branch out and they're evergreen. So they were really, they seemed, if you could fit them in with, as plantings, they were really good type trees. I don't know what they're, you'd have to have your landscape. Yeah, but they were a really good type.
Just point out to me on the plan where they are, because we put the existing trees in there? It's those ones along there?
Those ones, yeah. And they really blossomed out more than like some of these ones and some of the ones down by Sutton Pond. They had, they just had a really nice way of shading, so just something to consider. So, you know, in terms of construction and things like that, we always condition, always put construction conditions about how construction occurs, the times it occurs, and really any permit, we'll pay extra attention to that. I also did notice a lot of the water as we were standing out in the pouring rain, storm water are, that's still in the works, so that's all going to be addressed. I mean, a lot of the stuff that's on the pavement now is going to be covered by buildings, so that doesn't really change much, but there will be, and I was, you know, one of the things that I noticed in the site visits is how long one of the buildings goes into the field, so that will be a change with the impervious. And our stormwater review will take that into consideration and we'll be looking at that closely.
Just make one note in the morning. That water that you saw is going untreated into the culvert and then into the wetlands. The level of treatment that we're going to do to the stormwater is going to be to the current standard that's required by the state. So, you know, we're moving it around, it's going to go into a different spot, and I think Brian could talk about that if we want to talk about stormwater, but we can wait for the period.
I want to wait for that, but just, it was noticeable there in the current condition. So if it's going to be better, great, let's see how it's going to be better and see the experts tell us that. Or if it's going to be the same, it's going to be different. So we won't, we'll definitely go and want to address that. I think we certainly take your point about the difference in the neighborhood. I would just point out that the discussion we're having earlier was creating a new bylaw, whereas here we're dealing with something currently allowed by zoning by a special permit. So it's slightly different, but the point is still understood. Okay.
Narissa Hill. I am here to support all of my neighbors that live at Sutton Pond and also the neighboring communities and streets. But specifically, I'm here to address, we, myself, my husband and I and the Penitents live at Sutton Pond, but we live in a building called the Granite Building, and it's been completely overlooked when it comes to the size, especially of the second building. You can't see it in this picture because it's down a little farther to the edge, but there you go. Right at that point, the Granite Building is almost never represented in the pictures of Sutton Pond because it sits maybe 150 feet just below that corner elbow of the building. Building A, thank you, David.
Down here.
Exactly.
Like the two-story.
So it's almost never represented in any of the renderings for Building A because it's, yes, it's overlooked. So that five-story building, which sits right there in that elbow, is literally looming over this Granite Building. Now, we're not necessarily against having this project, and if it's done well and beautifully, but this amazing buffer has been built around all the other neighborhoods, and the Granite Building is just completely overwhelmed by the size and the scale of this five stories. Not to mention that the cut-through road that is now going to be connected to the new bypass road makes it almost like a thoroughfare. And the, when we went through the walkthrough the other day in the rain, where the edging of the building is staked, it's less than 15 feet from the edge of the Sutton Pond property, which if you were actually to walk, and there's no vantage points from Avalon Bay, from that portion of Sutton Pond, that building on Sutton Pond, to the view of what this will look like, which is essentially a skyscraper in front of our home.
I know when I, on the site view, I saw that and I had thought to myself, I didn't know, we really haven't talked about that building.
I mean, if there's, could be some concession, and I know Sutton Pond is zoned differently.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of what would.
And there's 15 feet is bare minimum. It doesn't even give them enough room to have any plantings. And every unit on the back of that building has a balcony. So you have a five-story building with roughly 75 balconies looming over your home. And that even, Sutton Pond already has balconies that overlook our home. They are significantly farther away than this building is going to be.
Yeah, yours, your spot is difficult.
We are in a unique position.
It is, because of the road, there's not a great way that I could at least see to put screening, planting, so.
So the zoning makes it difficult, but where do you find the balance between what it's zoned for and what's reasonable to, it is a residential neighborhood, though it might not be zoned that way. People live there, we live there, it's our home, it's our neighbors' homes. And there has to be some sort of happy medium to the height of that building and how we live our lives and making it beautiful for everyone around us. Whether that involves adding 30-feet buffer to just make the plantings be more mature or maybe adding some trees that give us some more shield, something to find a happy balance there. But this building is the equivalent of putting a skyscraper over our little Granite Building. And I'm hoping for some happy medium here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask you to use the pointer? And on this representation, show us with the pointer where the Granite Building is.
It's just off the page.
So show us where off the page it is.
It's right there.
May I?
Well, let's start with, show us with your pointer where off the page.
I believe it's right in this area here.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I thought it was down here. Okay. Where's the, where's the pointer?
It's a little higher up here.
That's right where the entrance is.
There it is. So it's right here? It's right here.
Not quite over that far to the right.
So in line with this curb?
By the cursor.
Okay, over here.
A little more to the left.
And it's just pavement in front of you, right? Yes.
And essentially, that street creates this freeway that goes right around the house to, which is.
But that, I mean, the traffic can go that way now, right? It's just not delineated, right?
So if you were to take the distance, not from a residential property line, but from a residential building to your building, is this the closest residential building to one of your new structures?
I couldn't say definitively either way. We can answer that question. But I think if, I don't know, do we have the aerial photo? Ed was looking at, you know, this one, Monica, from previous presentations?
Yeah, one of the whole campus.
Yeah.
One where we had one.
These three, we were showing before actually shows the Granite Building. We can see it with the mass.
And there was one, you showed at one point that showed all the buildings kind of, and like the proposal and High Street and Sutton Pond, just like as a campus. I forget when that was, but that was helpful. So we'll find that so we can get a sense of that. Why don't we continue while we do that?
Hi, I'm from Reserve Sutton Pond. First of all, I would like to thank you for having the site visit on Sunday, even though it was a bit wet, because it gave everyone a chance to see what these buildings look like. Also, Avalon and Monica today for the balloon test was a little windier than I thought it was going to be, but there were times the balloons went straight up and, like I was going to mention the Granite Building too, I mean, it just towers over the Granite Building. And even, it's, you know, we're four stories, this is five, and the ground goes up, so it makes it even higher. I, my big thing, and I've mentioned it in a couple emails, I brought it up at the last meeting, is that Building A is practically right on our property line and we, there's no space. Why can't this building be moved like the 50 feet on the other side?
Which direction are you suggesting?
Toward, into the parking lot.
To?
You're going to have to come closer to Building B.
Okay, closer towards Building B, okay. 50.
Yeah.
Okay.
And also, I think you could see that these buildings are massive and they really need to come down a couple stories. It's just too big for this area. And I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Just, we can, we're looking at some facts live on the Granite Building, so Brian has some. Yeah, we can, can you zoom in on that, Monica? I think you can see that the Granite Building, the one advantage it does have, and I understand it's of a different scale than Sutton Pond, is it does have a lot of trees between, on their property that shield the Granite Building. And the orientation of the Granite Building is really towards the pond. If you look at the facade of that building, there's two windows for each unit that face back towards us, and the majority of the, I think, the unit, the owners can correct me if I'm wrong, but face actually towards the pond.
Three, two, the three bedrooms, all the two of the three bedrooms in there all face towards the 75 bound.
How many units are in that building?
Just two.
That's a tough one.
And those trees don't exist like that right now.
Okay. Yeah.
There's not that many trees there.
Yeah, I, so that one's tough, to be honest. I'm not sure whether five, four, three stories really could matter for that particular perspective.
Three stories versus five would absolutely matter.
I mean, you're talking, first is about a compounding of how many people are.
Well, no, those are separate issues. I'm just talking about just the view. I'm just talking about just the view right now. Okay.
In response to a question that was raised, I think, at the last hearing on this, we did some measurements and it's based on some ortho photos because we don't have survey of all the adjoining properties or the private properties. It's approximately 150 feet.
Just, we can, we're looking at some facts live on the Granite Building, so Brian has.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, can you zoom in on that, Monica? I think you can see that the Granite Building, the one advantage it does have, and I understand it's of a different scale than Sutton Pond, is it does have a, a lot of trees between, on their property that shield the Granite Building. And the orientation of the Granite Building is really towards the pond. If you look at the facade of that building, there's two windows for each unit that face back towards us, and the majority of the, I think, the unit, the owners can correct me if I'm wrong, but face actually towards the pond.
Three, two, the three bedrooms, all the two, the three bedrooms in there all face towards the 75 balcony.
How many units are in that building?
Just two.
Two. That's, that's, that's a tough one.
And those trees don't exist like that right now.
They, they, yeah.
There's not that many trees there.
Yeah, I, so, that one's tough, I'm, to be honest, I'm not sure whether five, four, three stories really could matter for that particular perspective.
Three stories versus five would absolutely matter.
I mean, you're talking, first is about a compounding of how many people are.
Well, no, those are separate issues, I'm just, just talking about just the view, I'm just talking about just the view right now. Okay.
In, in response to a question that was raised, I think, at the, at the last hearing on this, we did some measurements and, and it's based on some ortho photos because we don't have survey of all the adjoining properties or the private properties. It's approximately 150 feet from the closest point on the building to the closest point on the Granite Building there, as it's proposed in this layout right now.
All right, so if you're going to ask a question, come on up to the podium, please. Could you guys just go back out, I just want to see the screen, how it looks aerial overall, okay? All right, thank you, all right, just leave that, go ahead.
Sutton Pond, the, the Granite Building is not the closest one residential to this monstrosity. Sutton Pond right there, the back door of Building B is probably only about 85 to 90 feet away from the back door of Sutton Pond. You've got a small, you've got a small entryway, probably 15- or 20-foot driveway, then you've got the fence, you've got trees, and that building is only, I bet you it's only 85 to 90 feet, at the very most, from the back door of the building to the left, Building A. So, when they're saying that there's, there's, you know, if you live in those units on the right-hand side, you're staring right at people next door to you. And we are four, we are four ground, we're four stories above ground, we're one underground. Are they proposing one ground underground? Okay, now, what's, what's the variation between the, the elevation between what you're going to build in Sutton Pond's parking lot? Is it 10 feet, 11 feet? Five feet, well, elevation between parking lots. We, let's say we're at five feet and they're at 12 feet, how much taller that building going to be? Are they, are they going to be, is their platform going to be the exact same as our platform as far as elevation goes?
I don't know, we don't know, we don't have the survey information for their property. What I would say is that the, the point where the back of Building A is closest to Sutton Pond, if you look at that, that side elevation that's there, actually half of that elevation is brick.
I think you can help, when you're on the site visit, Sutton Pond was.
We're, we're lower, we, we are lower than this is proposed.
Yeah, it was definitely lower, yeah.
So that, so that five-story building is actually going to be 10 feet or 12 feet higher.
Yeah, I understand.
Right, so, so they're not only doing a five-story building, they're doing a six-story building compared to what we have, they, they, they uniformed it to what we have, well, they're not uniformed what we have.
Right, we, we get that.
Okay, thank you very much.
A question related to Sutton Pond, and maybe the gentleman who was on the board would know the answer. How many units are in Sutton Pond altogether?
188.
188, and how big is the property?
Zach Angerich, I do not know.
But it's 188 units.
It's 188 units, including the two in the Granite Building.
Okay.
Are these all, can we see all the buildings here?
Yes.
I think we calculated before and Sutton Pond was about just under 30 units per acre.
Do, do, so in this kind of reverse C-shaped building, I see the balconies facing out towards the proposed apartment. Are there balconies on the other side facing each other as well? Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I guess, I'm, in just, while I'm here, just, I guess my only comment is, is that, you know, understand that the High Street people have issues with maybe people walking through their property wanting some trees or some fence. We have, you know, and I don't want this issue to get lost, we have the unique problem is that the, the road that comes down from Main Street is a pass-through. It goes over our dam, it goes over our bridge, and we're going to need a, I mean, our owners are going to have to come up with some solution in order to protect our private property because it's not the intended use. And is that something that we address with the planning board, or is that something we address with Avalon?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I think we'd be willing to work with Sutton Pond to come up with some sort of, I had mentioned this, I think, at an earlier hearing, to come up with some sort of funding for them to put in a gate system or some other access control so that people aren't cutting through on the bridge that I know they're very concerned about. It's, you know, all of our traffic and other traffic and cutting through their site, so we'd be happy to talk about that as a mitigation measure.
I can't say that it's something that we can necessarily condition because it's not on the property that's a locust, but if that was something that came to an agreement, I think that makes our job easier in getting to some sort of approval because it does present mitigation. So I think it behooves everybody to work on that quickly.
You know, I mean, I think traffic is primary, you know, in terms of weight going over the bridge and the dam and stuff like that. I'm not sure there's, you know, I mean, we can do signs, it's like, don't walk through because we still have to pick up the trash and stuff like that, I think that's a kind of a secondary concern because I don't think we necessarily can stop that 100%, but certainly the traffic issue is paramount to us.
I think that's a great thing to work on and would certainly make our job easier here.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Great. All right.
Hi, Diane Montella, I live at Sutton Pond. I want to talk from a little different perspective, I want to, I want to talk from the, the people perspective, like the people who wake up every day in this neighborhood. Not that other folks haven't been addressing it from that vantage point, but I mean in a really visceral way. So are Avalon Bay folks, any of you live in North Andover?
Let's not go there, please.
No, no, I.
No, really, seriously, don't go there, you're going the wrong way.
What, what is it that you're?
Here's my concern. I share the same gratitude towards the planning board that the other people have voiced about the amount of effort that you've put in. We understand that you have to look at data and numbers, we understand that you have to look at what's legally allowed. What I don't think you understand is that the 20, 30, 40 people who are showing up here, still showing up here, represent hundreds of people in our neighborhood who are, who feel completely let down, who feel that we have not been heard. We've been to this podium many times, you've heard it again, over and over again tonight. Five stories is too high because it just, I understand, but I don't know, I don't think you understand that what.
You're lecturing us and.
I don't mean to be.
If, if you're trying to make a sale, you're not making a sale, you're going in the opposite direction.
I don't mean to be lecturing you, I'm trying, I'm trying to convey to you, people are showing a great deal of restraint in the way that they're communicating, and that is wonderful. I'm trying to convey to you in a very, like, inside-the-heart way, what, what, what we fear is happening. And we fear we can't stop the train. And the people that we entrust to stop the train from running us over are sitting here in front of us. And so I, there is a, there is a worry that it's done, right? You hear people saying, if this is going to happen, we have to have fencing, we have to have, it's the last-ditch desperation. And I, and I, I, I feel worried, I'm not so much, I'm sorry that if what I'm conveying is anger at you, that's not what I'm, that's not what's coming from inside me, it's worry. That the character of this whole residential area, I, I don't know if I said this another time when I spoke at a prior meeting, but I get in my, get on my feet and walk around, or I get in my vehicle, different seasons of the year, and what runs through my head is, oh my God, I live in a postcard. That's what living in North Andover is, at least good parts of it, right? Many parts, meaning goodly numbers, you know, large volume of it. This is going to take that quality of life away the way it is currently designed. And we've been repetitive in asking for the adaptations that would not let that happen. And we are so dependent upon you for that. I understand you haven't made the decision, but when we hear the conversations, it sounds like, you know, we, we asked, five stories is too high, one building, parts of one building came down to four stories, it's not enough. 200 units is too many because it destroys the postcard that we live in, that we moved into, that we've helped contribute to, that we've paid taxes to try to preserve. And we're dependent on you to protect the town, this is the town, I'm the town, we're the town. The buildings are not the town. And we just, I understand that you, you have that in mind, I get that. We're not feeling it, we're, we're feeling like it's, the train is just rolling right over us.
I can't speak to your feelings, but I can speak to the fact that I personally think that the comments that have been made have been very useful. So like, in the comments that some, the gentleman who came up during the subdivision talk and suggested, you know, change, that might be small, but I think that was, that was a change that we had made. Plans have changed, these aren't, we haven't voted on anything yet, but we have to consider a lot of different factors. One is the impact on the neighborhood, one is how this would positively or negatively benefit the town as a whole. We have to consider that they're allowed to build multifamily on this parcel, okay? They're allowed to build something. They're also allowed to build a lot of other things, commercial, retail, things that would have much higher uses by right, where we would have no impact. They could do a 40B project, where we had, there are a lot of different things that could happen here, and we have to consider all of those. We also have to consider that if some people said, just say no to this project, if we did that, we vote no, it's a possibility, and maybe we will, that they appeal that and then they can build whatever they want without, without very many conditions. That happened when we had a cell tower project, okay? There was a cell tower proposal before, we voted it down, it went to federal court, it got overturned, and now they can pretty much build the thing that lots of neighbors came out and said they didn't want to build. This isn't the same project, different concerns, but we have to be within the law, within the bylaw, and those are all the factors that we're considering, okay? So it's a lot to decide on, all the things that people have said, we're trying to put that all into a mix and come up with a legally justifiable solution that we can live with. And I don't know what that is, we haven't discussed that, what that is. After we're done here, we're going to talk about it, if we're ready to talk, if we have all the information to talk about that, and then we'll see where it lies. But nothing's been decided, none of us can talk about the numbers or anything like that outside of the public meeting, which makes it very difficult to, to come up with answers because we haven't shared our thoughts, but that's what the public process is, it's not easy, so that's what we're going to do next. So that's where we stand, so we hear you, but we're trying to do things the way that the law allows us to do them, okay?
Thank you.
I think they've just stressed that too, we haven't discussed anything, so that, I, it's hard to sit here and say that we're giving a, an answer one way or another, because we, we literally have not discussed it, we've been listening for months.
Right, and I think it's helpful, I think it's helpful, more helpful for someone to say, we get that there are a lot of people that don't want, that want us to say, no, no apartments, okay? And that's on the table, we can say that, I don't know how.
But we can't be arbitrary.
Correct, we can't be arbitrary, we can't be capricious, we can't say, okay, someone else's project is okay, but this one isn't, we have to have reasons for whatever we do. So that's why getting everyone's opinions as to if we do allow it, what they would like to see is helpful. We get that a lot of people don't want it, so we, we understand that, that's a possibility. We haven't talked numbers and that's, we're going to get to that point once we get all the information that we think we need. So that's what we're trying to get to.
Hi, my name is Margaret Welch, and I live at Sutton Pond. And my only concern is, being that I work in insurance, is that when I'm coming out of that parking lot, my view is going to be obstructed, so if someone's dog gets loose or child gets loose from their parents and run, that, you know, that I'm not going to be able to see them in time because my view is going to be obstructed from that building on my left-hand side.
Obstructed for something.
Like, when I'm coming out of Sutton Pond, we have stop signs. So as I'm slowly coming out, because one time a trash truck was coming from, like, say, the Jade parking lot, you know, that parking lot that you came down when you visited the site. You know, luckily he stopped, but he was going pretty fast, I mean, you know people driving the parking lot, you've seen them. I mean, some drive slow, some drive fast. So, so that would be my concern, is that, you know, if someone's walking or an elderly or, you know, child gets loose from their parent or dog gets loose, you know, from the leash or whatever, you know, that.
Seeing around this building.
Right, so if I'm coming out to go onto High Street to go to work, that, you know, my view is slightly obstructed because I'm a cautious driver, my mother says I'm too cautious, but I, I am a very cautious driver, so I mean, I don't go barreling through the parking lot. And even when I turn in at nighttime, you know, there are people are cutting through, you know, the parking lot to get out. So I mean, you know, but that would be one of my concerns, is the height of the building. And the only other condition that I would recommend is that, you know, if this does pass through, that, you know, the, the neighbors that are affected, you know, with the construction, like on High Street or Sutton Pond, that, you know, that when they apply for their apartments, I know they have to apply a certificate of insurance and stuff like that, that, you know, that, that maybe the residents be included as additional insureds on that certificate, so if something does get damaged to their house or the foundation gets cracked and stuff like that, so. That would be my, that would be my concern, like I said, is.
That's a good point, I'm not sure that's within our jurisdiction, but I don't, but it's, I'm not sure how that works.
Right, but I'm just saying that, if, you know, maybe they can come down three stories, I, I mean, that's.
We're going to just.
That's up to you, but that would be my concern, is, because I mean, I walk that neighborhood every day, every morning. You know, up High Street, you know, Water Street, Main Street, and stuff like that, so. That would be my concern, is the height, the height of the building.
Okay. All right. So I have a question, so in terms of heights, if, as, as proposed, we have four and five stories and we have 200 units that fit in those, correct? At four stories and at three stories, how many units could you fit, approximately? Or how many are on the first three floors and the fourth floor? So we have information about that. Do we have information about how many are in each floor? Or can we get that? Can you can find it? I can put it together, yeah. Okay. I mean, except for the setbacks, if they were consistently five stories, each building's about 100, so it's about 20 units per floor. The setbacks, the step downs, step it, throw it off a little bit, but generally if they're five-story buildings and they're 100 units, it's about 20 units per floor. So at three stories, approximately you're looking at 120 units, at four stories, you're at 160? Something like that, yeah. Approximately? Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. So we're still waiting on stormwater. And we're waiting on our review of the decreased financial impact, but we did have review of the original financial impact, right?
Yes, they provided a first review and asked for some additional information in terms of, basically explanations as to how they figured the impact.
So. We can have a discussion now, for, I mean, is there more information people want, people want to think about these things before we? Either this meeting or the next meeting, I'd like to have a discussion about where people stand on what they're thinking, not set in stone, but where your heads are at, so that eventually we can draft a decision that says rejection, acceptance with these conditions, we have to do something and make a decision. So I'm personally getting ready to be able to do that, so I just want to know where people are at. And are we ready to have that discussion tonight, or do we want to have it at the next meeting? When do people want to discuss where their heads are at in terms of heights and?
I think I could start the discussion tonight.
Right, not finalizing it, but, okay.
And an observation I would make is that the change in density, massing, and size that the applicant made, I saw resulted in a big difference. And I still feel that the massing and the size and the density is really challenging for this location. And having seen the difference the last change made, it just makes me think that another change could make another dramatic difference to allow this to fit in a way that really works with the neighborhood. So in other words, to maybe make it simpler, I, at least as I'm sitting here right now, I feel like we're not quite there. But I feel like another change could have a similarly big impact.
Okay?
I think the massing's huge still. And I think a change for me would have to be pretty substantial to feel like it fits in the area.
Okay, okay, what do you think?
Going on the site visit really gave me a better appreciation for how massive it is. I, I didn't get a lot of it, honestly, from some of the renderings, but being there and seeing it, so I, in agreement.
Does anybody want to be the first person to put out numbers? Because if not, I will. Because, I mean, we, we have to, that, that, that's the elephant that we have to deal with, the, the number of units and the number of floors. Again, not in.
Again, not in stone, but...
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I agree with all the comments, and I also, you know, I compliment the applicant for careful attention to detail and working and listening to people, but feels to me this works at 150, I'm sorry, I just can't see it any, any more than that. It's just, I think, Peter, your point is that each decrement makes a big difference, I, I think 150 is about the maximum number that I could possibly see here.
Aaron, what do you think?
Um, I, I, I think what I'm thinking, it's already been said, it's, it's, it, it, you know, to, to one extent, you know, the, the slope of the, the property, you know, the height is mitigated a little bit from the high-speed street perspective, but not so on the Sutton condominium perspective, so, so, yeah, I, I like what the applicant's done in terms of breaking it up, clubhouse, making that one story, making the ends one story less, even cutting back the building adjacent to Sutton condominium, so that it's not overlapping, but, but I, I still think the height's an issue.
Okay, so, I, I agree. So I, let me say, I start by coming at it, as I look at this, I know a lot of people have talked about it as the impact on the neighborhood, and it is, it's going, it does make a difference, but I also try to look at this as if this was all built at the same time. To me, it does fit, it does fit as something that, that works at the right scale, that we have residential apartments and condos, we have more residential apartments, and then we have single-family homes. I think it, it does fit, I think it serves an important need downtown, because we do need housing, we do need bodies downtown to make our retail and restaurants and all that work. So I think as a concept, it fits, I like the clubhouse much better this way. My, in my head, 150 to 175 is appropriate based on the traffic studies, based on the financial impact, based on the height, I think four stories would be the maximum that I'd want to see all across, because I do think five stories has a significant impact on both Sutton Pond and on High Street in both, in all directions. So that's where I have, I'd say for me, if some of the units were affordable, then I'd be more comfortable with a higher number, that's my own personal preference, because I think that provides a public benefit. But that's, that's me, but I think that's the range, one, one, yeah, I mean, I, I think that's where I'm at too, in terms of the numbers overall, because I do...
Yeah, but, but earlier you're speaking to alternatives, and I think residential here is by far the best alternative, something's going to be done here.
Correct.
That, that's indisputable. Residential is the best option, so trying to figure out how to make residential work here.
Right, because I mean, they could use, the under, the underlying zoning is industrial, you could put, you know, a lot of, any kind of light warehouses there, you could put bang, there's a lot of different stuff you could put in there that would be not fitting with this area.
So I would just echo, I, I agree with what everyone has said. I feel similarly that if it had all been built at the same time, yes, this could work, but not at this scale. That if it was built at the same time, it would not be at this scale.
It would have been, it would have been a different line.
Yeah.
What you would have done is just made Sutton Pond a little bigger.
Right, right, so it kind of scales off even, and, and into, because right where Sutton Pond is, there aren't as many neighbors in it, so, okay, so I mean, I think that's general. Can you go?
We talked a lot about with the Knights of Columbus property, the three stories versus four that abutted that neighborhood, and we made a really big deal of the difference in that one story.
Yeah.
I think we have the same issue here, and I don't think the step up alleviates that. So for me, you're saying 175, I'm thinking three stories, I don't know what that translates to, and...
Three stories is about 120. I mean, I said, I said four stories.
Right.
Like I said, I could...
But we, there are a lot of neighbors that are impacted here, and there are other issues other than the, the viewpoints.
There are, but there are other benefits too, I mean, that's, that's, I just think there are, I don't want to, I think that the impact on the neighborhood is, is very important, but I, I don't want to lose the impact on the town, that I think that this is a tremendously positive benefit to have residential in the downtown that is done properly.
And I would, I, I love your comparison with the Knights of Columbus, but, but I, I would, and you're right, we really, we talked a lot about where the higher should go, right? And one of the discussion points at, in that example was, could something be stepped? And that applicant said, no, we can't do that. In, in this case, this applicant has, I think, tried to be creative with what stepping might achieve, and I, I just don't think I can support five stories, but I guess, given what I have seen so far, when the applicant made a change, it wasn't good enough, but it made a big difference. And now, I am very interested to see, given that, I think we've seen some effort at creativity here, I'm very interested to see what might be possible, and I'm not an architect.
Right.
So I would like to see, I would really be interested to see what could be done, you know, with the numbers and floors that we've been talking about, and the fronting on the neighborhood, what's possible in the world of architecture here, to see if we can find something that fits.
Are, are your thoughts just purely related to height?
Or is it the massing over, overall? Would you like to see more light? Would you like to see more, you know, maybe breaking up the building differently, or...
Height and massing.
The problem is that the longer it is, the shorter it can be, right?
Yeah. I, I would say height, massing, and proximity of the height to the residential areas, and what, what can be done. Bit of a puzzle here to move the pieces.
Okay. So... Yeah, please?
Yeah, thanks, so I appreciate it, and I just wanted to, and I appreciate, and I've sat through all the meetings too, so I, I've heard the same comments you have. I guess what I'd say is, we're here because we need a special permit for the residential. If these buildings were office buildings, we wouldn't need a special permit, they could be five stories all the way across, they could have the return where the clubhouse is now at five stories as well, and it would comply, it would apply completely, RCG could do that tomorrow, and all of the mitigation, all the step downs, all the one-story clubhouses would not be subject to this review at all. So I guess when I think about how dense is this site, I think how dense is it compared to an alternate use, which I think, you know, you touched on before, because it's not too dense compared to your master plan, it's not too dense compared to your zoning, it's not too dense compared to the West Mill, it's not too dense compared to Sutton Pond, and it's not too dense compared to an alternate use. I do agree that because we need a special permit for the residential use, and the overlay is drafted that way, we're here, and this is absolutely an appropriate discussion for this board to have. I just wanted to bracket that discussion by saying that if for some reason this project doesn't go forward, the alternates are not better. I do not believe the alternates are better from the concerns that you're talking about. So that's just my only comment that I wanted to put out there, but that's it for me.
I, I don't disagree with you, I mean, we got to vote on the project that we have, and we have to be comfortable with the project that we have in front of us, but I, I don't disagree that there are alternative uses allowed by zoning that would potentially be worse if they came to, we don't know that they would ever come to existence, but they could.
Yeah, and I think one thing that exists now that didn't exist maybe before is, because of the effort that we've put into this, we've figured out how to work around the easements, we've figured out how to work around the stormwater, we've figured out how to work around the wetlands, and if it was an alternate use, it would be pretty easy to come and just say all this stuff that Avalon had to, you know, work with because of their, their use, which I hear that you say you want residential, but I'm not feeling that when I see that an alternate use could come in, use all of the footprints that we've previously developed, and say, and, and have no review essentially, and there would be limited impact, limited ability for the abutters or the board to really weigh in on that, so, just, just a note of caution.
Yep, so...
No, it is, it is helpful. So, I think, I think we have some thinking to do, and you guys have some, I mean, you've got a sense of where we're at, I mean, I think the consensus was that, that nobody's really digging five stories, and kind of 150 is where our heads are at. You have no obligation to present alternative plans or anything like that, if you wanted to have us look at them, we can, or we can vote based on, you know, we don't need alternative plans to vote on conditions of what's allowed, so, but if you, if there were discussions that you wanted to have with the planning department, or provide what that would look like without committing to it, you can if you want to, okay?
I, I can't answer that tonight.
I'm not asking you to, I'm just telling you, you have that option, okay? So, why don't we, why don't we think about that? We'll try to see where we get on the subdivision for next meeting, and then we can either take this up again at the next meeting, or we take it up on the 17th, I'm not sure yet.
But before we...
Well, we still need the stormwater and all that.
Well, yeah, that, that's my point, I wanted to ask this board, what, are there any other concerns that the applicant should take back and think about after this evening? Want to avoid them going back, maybe reconsidering some aspect of this project, just for us to say two weeks from now, or actually next week, well, what about this? And then have to have them reconsider yet again, so, I, I, from my perspective, I, I have nothing else than of this.
I mean, assuming the stormwater comes back and it meets what we need, I don't think we need to have our fiscal impact person come in and listen, I, I just don't think we need that. Really, the height, massing, and number of units, I think everything, I think, I agree that concessions have been made, I like the landscaping, I think that working with neighbors to fencing and screening, I think all that is really good, it's just, you know, eventually it was going to come down to the numbers, which is the hardest part, and I think we just have to make a decision. If that's something that we want to do cooperatively, that's fine, it doesn't have to be, and maybe we, at some point, we just got to take a vote, so, that's, I mean, this is, this is what happens at every kind of planning board that you guys go in front of, you hear what we think, you have the right to do what you want with that, so why don't we continue it till the 3rd?
Well, I would suggest, because do... To the, the holiday, and many people not being, probably not may get the stormwater in time, you may want to consider continuing to the 17th, which then would also allow them more time to kind of think about other options.
I'd also think about what we've heard today, and I'd ask people to think about really where your numbers come down, so we can potentially lock that in, so, yeah, why don't we do that? 17th, great.
17th, thank you.
Yes, thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You too. Thank you.
Nobody ever wants to stick around.
Imagine that. Sorry, Ross, why aren't we standing?
How long have you been here? 30 years?
I, this is like when I first joined the planning board, we were happy until 1:00 in the morning, because we'd have like four residential subdivisions in one week, so...
Wow.
Yeah. And there was no planning staff then, there was, there was one, like where, so Monica, don't feel so bad, it was worse when Karen Nelson was here.
I don't know, last year, the meetings didn't go so long.
So what are you saying, talk faster?
I think he's volunteering.
Oh, no. Oy, tay.
Thank you, I'm just saying, I did.
Do more than seven, for two days.
I offered to take you first. All right, 1600 Osgood Street, 1600 Osgood LLC, we have a new public hearing, application for divi, definitive subdivision approval of a one-lot plan on parcel land consisting of approximately 31.06 acres located on the west side of Osgood Street, or what is known as 1600 Osgood Street, the premises effective is located within the I-2 zoning district. We also have 1600 Osgood Street, 1600 Osgood LLC, application for site plan review, continued public hearing, 1600 Osgood Street, Hillwood Enterprises, application for site plan review, parking, building height, floor area ratio, Hillwood Enterprises LP, continued public hearing, 1600 Osgood Street, 1600 Osgood LLC, application for large-scale ground-mounted solar energy system, site plan review, setback modification, special permit, site plan, continued public hearing. All right.
Mr. Chairman, the members of the board, John School Act, attorney for the applicants. With me is Mac Utsey of Hillwood, Vice President for Development, as well as Nate Kershner, Senior Project Manager for Laying and Engineering. And also with us is Michael Rosen, Attorney for the Owners. For this evening, we have a couple of simple topics to cover this evening, both the definitive subdivision plan and signage. In terms of signage, we, we've developed concepts with respect to what we think would be appropriate for both the Amazon lot, Lot B, as well as buildings, Lot A, where buildings 20 and 21 are existing today. In terms of the definitive subdivision plan, if we could go to the next slide, Monica? You recall, we, we had discussed a number of times this proposed subdivision roadway, which is on the Northerly Access roadway, it overlays the existing Northerly Access roadway, and the reason why we're creating the subdivision is to create legal frontage for Lot C, since the wetlands encumber the frontage all along Osgood Street. So we're essentially creating a one-lot subdivision, which would be, again, overlaying on, on the existing Northern Access roadway, it'll be a private roadway to create that We anticipate, if all goes well, you know, this would be, this roadway would be improved the same time as we undertake all the other improvements on the, on the site as part of the redevelopment. We've also received a set of comments from TEC last Wednesday, there were three, I would consider very minor comments, which have been sent along to the, the DPW, including the Town Engineer for further comment. We've also had discussions with the Fire Department because of the fact that this roadway, it is a short roadway, it doesn't include a cul-de-sac, and the reason we don't have a cul-de-sac is essentially the roadway ends and then Lot B begins, and that'll be the major access roadway for more of the truck traffic that would occur on the Northerly In addition, we've requested a number of waivers, given the fact that this is an existing sort of substantially built-out roadway, we've requested a number of waivers that you typically have seen in other smaller subdivision roadways, including street trees and certain design standards that are, and the material... including street trees and certain design standards that are in the materials. We did note that the minimum width of the right-of-way is 60 feet in this circumstance. We actually are at 73 feet, which is allowed to occur with planning board consent. We felt that that extra width of the roadway was necessary for this, for the traffic that would occur on this, on this access point. The roadway itself is only just a little over 200 feet in length in this location. So in terms of other... That would be the truck traffic, the trailer truck traffic, and some of the passenger vehicle traffic as well. That would be the main access point for...
Is that where the driveway is now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, same exact location, substantially identical.
Is there going to be, is the light, the signal going to change there?
There's likely to be some signalization improvements. Did you want to add to that?
I'd like to know.
Sure, currently, that northern axis has a somewhat decommissioned, it's a flashing yellow, flashing red signal. It'll be brought back online as a fully operating signal. The equipment's outdated and will likely have to be upgraded as part of the improvements. Location's the same, full signal will be put back into operation with modern signal technology.
Yeah, I think the trucks turning their signal would be important.
And it's, just to clarify, it is combined truck and employee traffic, specifically for the Amazon building, Lot B.
Okay, so if you're going to work at Ozzy Properties, probably you're taking one of the, turn closer towards North Andover entrance. If you're looking in the...
For Lot A, you're right.
Yeah.
Lot A, so currently, there's the existing signal, we'll call the North-North driveway, which is the signal, the definitive subdivision Lot D piece. There's two unsignaled access locations for Lot A, the Ozzy buildings, and then the, what would be the South-South, currently operating, currently functioning signal, again, probably would likely be upgraded in terms of technology, is also exclusively for the Amazon. So for Ozzy, it's the two interior existing curbs.
Monica, if you could just flip to the next number of slides, I think.
This just shows a close-up of the roadway itself, and if we can go to the next slide, show us how this roadway integrates with the existing landscape plan. So, you know, to the extent that we're asking for waivers of street trees, we're actually essentially integrating this roadway into our landscaping plan that you already seen. If we could go to the next, okay, this is, again, going into signage. Now, we're establishing signage, obviously, for Lot A, Lot B, and Lot C will have its own smaller sign for solar. We're going to have to relocate, because of the lot configuration, we're going to have to relocate some of the main standing signs or ground signs that you see there today for Osgood Landing. And so if you look at this slide, you'll see locations for standing signs in purple. The existing standing signs are generally on the far northern access roadway and far southerly access roadway. Those standing signs, which were approved, I guess, were approved by variance back in 2006, will actually be relocated to Lot A, to the two main entrances on Lot A. And in the place of where, roughly where those existing signs are, will locate signs for Amazon in those locations. So if we go to the next slide, Monica. So these are the two signs that you generally see out there today, would be relocated to Lot A, to the two Lot A entrances, which again would require, because of the way the sign bylaw is written, it's going to require a variance for sign size, because 100 square feet is allowed by right. And also, you can only have one standing sign under the sign bylaw. So for two, for these two signs, we'll have to seek variance relief. And the same would be potentially the same for Amazon as well. If we go to the next slide, again, this is the existing Osgood Landing ground sign that's there today. That's not changing, if we can go to the next slide, please, Monica. This is the ground sign that would be on the northerly access road for Amazon, and it's about 11 feet wide, nine feet high. Not an opposing sign. This sign will likely be located again on the both far north and far southerly access roads. Go to the next slide. In addition, for Lot A, for Buildings 20 and 21, they're going to have additional tenants, most likely a diverse set of tenants, so they're looking for a more robust signage plan for their, for their existing building. And so this is a conceptual identification of building signs on Buildings 20 and 21. If we can go to the next slide, please, Monica. Yes.
Not out on the street.
Correct, correct. And again, this is an existing, this is the existing sign you see there today at Building 20. If we can go to the next slide. This is sort of a conceptual signage plan for signs to the rear of the building, of Buildings 20 and 21. As you know, as we've discussed, there's going to be a rehab of the rear, the rear facade of the building, essentially mimicking the front facade. And the idea is to increase tenant signage to the rear of the building. Again, this won't be seen from Osgood Street, but it'll be seen from those driving into Lot A to the rear. The next slide is 12 and 13. Our identification signage, which is there today, so that's likely to remain as is. If we can go to the next few slides, Monica. These are additional signage types that we'd like to introduce for Buildings 20 and 21. And if we can go to the next slide. And in terms of the Amazon building, we're looking at two wall signs, one of which would be at the main entrance, and the other would be on the southerly front of the building. So if we can go to the next slide, Monica. So this would be one of the two signs, that would be a wall sign, and then the next sign would be the Amazon logo. So those are the types of wall signs that we'd be looking at for Lot B. If we can go to the next slide there, Monica. One of the items that was thought as a concept is to introduce wayfinding signs in strategic locations. And currently directional signs are allowed under the zoning bylaw. They can't be more than four square feet in size, and they can't have any commercial content on them and the like. So these are concepts that we would like to introduce. We'll still have to work with the building inspector to see whether these signs would be as of right or whether a variance would need to be obtained for them. So if we, Monica, if you could move to the next slide to show those signs. So the idea again is to have the ability to provide more enhanced wayfinding signs throughout Buildings, the Lot A for Buildings 20 and 21. Again, if we can move on to the next slide, Monica, thanks. Those are, again, are concept signs. And the next slide number 20 is a set of other signage that Amazon typically uses. The numbered signs are usually reserved for the docks for the building. And so there's a variety of signs that they use. Again, smaller signage, and we'll have to work with the building inspector to confirm what is allowed, what isn't allowed. The next slide, if you could, this is a, because of the limitation on building sign, signage in the industrial district, you're allowed 200 square feet max. So this is a view of the northern entrance. If you look at that pink arrow, that shows you the Amazon sign at 200 square feet, and you're about between 950 and 1,000 feet away from Osgood Street, you can't really see it. So that's, that's sort of a problem with the bylaw, that's something where we would like to probably apply for variance relief. If we can go to the next slide, this is the close-up of that sign that you just saw. So from, I guess, behind Buildings 20 and 21. I mean, ideally, in terms of the signage, what we'd like to do is to put together a signage master plan, but the zoning doesn't call for it today. In the Plan Development District, you have the ability to create a sign master plan. We got that amendment done probably eight or nine years ago, and then under the Sub District A, we have a similar provision. You know, we would, and I know the sign bylaw is really just a mess. I mean, it's a bylaw that needs a lot of work, and it's sort of a vestige from the 70s, I think. No, I'm not volunteering that, but, but what I would like the board to consider is the possibility of including a provision, maybe at the next town meeting, to call for the ability to create a sign master plan by special permit to allow basically the same sort of thing that you see today at the East Mill to be applied to something, a facility like this. Because clearly, when you're limited to one ground sign and of 100 square feet, and if you're limited to one wall sign of 200 square feet, and your building is 800 or 900,000 feet away, it really doesn't make sense. And so we think that, you know, that basically looking at that as a master plan effort for the entire site might make a little more sense. But in the short term, however, because we're creating the new lots, we're going to have to seek variance relief, particularly for the standing signs, to allow those signs to be moved and relocated and to add the new ones. So again, this is the preliminary conceptual we have for signage. I don't think the board typically approves signs, it's something the building inspector would approve if it's by right or of the Board of Appeals if we needed a variance, but we wanted to at least give you a sort of a flavor or at least a little bit of information as to where we're heading on that signage effort. And once we have discussion with the building inspector, we'll know more clearly what we're going to need for variance relief. And then we'll make a decision as to whether, no, we would look for the entire relief, or whether we would look for some of that relief in terms of like the standing signs, and maybe wait for a zoning change in the spring to allow for, I guess, a more creative master plan for signage. So that's all I had for this evening at this point. Happy to take any questions, but I think that, you know, the subdivision roadway is fairly straightforward, so.
So what's next?
Well, we're working on, excuse me.
Or what's outstanding, I guess?
Well, I mean, in terms of traffic, we're still working with Mass DOT.
Okay.
And we're, hopefully, we're close on getting somewhere on that, a resolution on that. And I'm not sure there's a whole lot outstanding. Once we get that sort of traffic measurement, I guess, approved by Mass DOT, we'll still have to come back and just revise our comments accordingly and for tech to review. But stormwater is done, as far as we're concerned. I'm not sure there's much more other than traffic remaining on this.
They're fire, submitted some possible conditions. I know they had to submit for extra review due to the complexity of the system. Building may have some conditions they might want to add to, so I'm still waiting to hear if there's anything from them, and then Conservation is still looking at this as well.
So it makes sense to put this over to the 17th and see where we're at? Is there anything to come back on next week?
I'm not sure there is anything. I guess could be kept on the agenda for next week? Most likely, we would push this over to the following meeting, but in the event that we had.
Keep in mind, I have to close the agenda tomorrow due to the extended holiday, so if I don't have materials that are submitted basically tomorrow morning, then they will probably not be posted until Monday.
I think the 17th is probably reasonable, you know, if we, if we get an answer from DOT tomorrow, the day before Thanksgiving, which would be surprising, we would still need to submit back to TEC in order to get a response by next Tuesday, which I don't, you know, with the holiday between now and then isn't reasonable. So the 17th should give us enough time to ideally receive a final answer from DOT on everything, address comments with TEC, come in on the 17th with, you know, all peer review comments satisfactorily addressed, and hopefully.
The possibility of coming on the 17th, all the answers, give us the final information, and then potentially drafting decisions and trying to vote on it in January? Yes, Monica?
I think that's...
The 17th is our last meeting for this year, so we're looking at, you know, the new year, early in the new year. Process everything.
Draft those decisions, get them circulated, get them reviewed, and finish this off, okay?
And there's some other, you know, outstanding items that we'll talk about in terms of hours of construction that are a little bit unique for this, for this project, we could talk about at that time as we get closer.
Potentially work with Monica on in the draft decision and just point it out to us that it's different or something like that.
Yeah.
We can definitely speak. I want to kind of line up, you know, figure out what your suggestions are, and then I can present that in a succinct way to the board to kind of like the field project.
Happy to do that.
Okay, so continued until December 17th.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, we have a communication from Cricket Lane.
What was that about?
Could we make, yeah, could we get a motion to forward that to our town council to see if there's anything we should be doing on that?
I'll make a motion to afford the town council.
Give a second? On favor?
I still want to know what the heck was, I couldn't understand it.
I didn't understand it either, that's why we're forwarding it to the town council, because I didn't understand. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.